Good afternoon, everybody. I will give this interpreting announcement in both English and Spanish, and we will also add it to the chat. Buenas tardes. Voy a dar este anuncio sobre la interpretación en inglés y en español, y también lo agregaré en el chat. In order to provide language access, we will be providing simultaneous bidirectional interpretation in English and Spanish. If you are bilingual, you do not have to click anything. If you are not bilingual in English and Spanish, you will have to select your language in order to hear the interpretation. If you are on a laptop or desktop, at the bottom right of your screen, you will see a globe icon that says "interpretation." Please click on the globe now and select "English." If you are on an iPad or a phone, locate the three-dot menu and select "language interpretation." Then select "English" and click "Done." When it's your turn to speak, please remember to be loud and clear and speak at a moderate pace. Thank you. Muy buenas tardes. Esta reunión contará con interpretación simultánea bidireccional en inglés y en español. Si usted es bilingüe, no tiene que presionar nada. Si usted no es bilingüe, tendrá que elegir su idioma para escuchar la interpretación. Si está usando una computadora, verá un icono en la parte inferior de su pantalla a la derecha en forma de globo que dice "interpretación." Haga clic ahí ahora y seleccione "español." Si está usando un iPad o su teléfono, localize el menú de tres puntos, o tal vez dice "más", haga clic en "Interpretación de idiomas", elija "español", y "finalizar." O si está en inglés, dice "done." Cuando sea su turno de hablar, por favor recuerde hablar con voz fuerte y clara y a un paso moderado. Thank you. Are there any questions with regards to interpretation?
Absolutely. Please stand and face the flag. Put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you so much, Board President Ford, and welcome, everybody, to our second in-person meeting today in a limited fashion according to the rules for our board room size. Today, we're bringing you an action item to start our meeting off with for your consideration regarding secondary reopening. I do want to acknowledge and thank everybody for the wonderful reopening we had last week for our elementary students, and I had the opportunity to attend a few schools and was so moved by the joy and excitement in all the children's faces. It really reminded me of why we exist and who we serve. I do want to acknowledge the many emails and phone calls that I received from our secondary staff and parents who are eager to join us in the secondary reopening as well. I know it's difficult to wait, but don't give up hope. We're going to get to the finish line, and we have to remain both vigilant and optimistic. I want to also thank Teacher John Dent, the multimedia teacher at Dos Pueblos High School, and our students Ben and Gabe, who have been helping us with the setup for today's meeting so that we can bring you a more robust-looking board meeting in these pandemic times. I also want to congratulate Danny Goldberg of San Marcos High School, the first recipient of ESPARTS Jerry Harwin Community Service Award. And I do want to also show you a video from San Marcos High School that will show how San Marcos High School is preparing for their return to reopening. So with that, I'd like to ask Ms. Barnwell or Mr. Hernandez to please play the video of the San Marcos High School students preparing for safety protocols for our reopening.
Hey Royals! We are so excited to welcome you back to school. However, school may look a bit different than it has before. You may ask yourself, what is six feet apart? What does that look like? When you are walking the hallways and walking too close to your friends? Well, we have a solution for you to stay six feet apart. At San Marcos High School, we will stay a Sheldon apart. That's six feet, Royals. When you are back in the classrooms with your friends, guess what? We've done the work to keep you safe, to make sure you are about a Sheldon apart. When you're in the quad for lunch or hanging out with your friends in between classes, Dr. Glazer says, "No way, no room for COVID on our campus." Don't be a steerin' apart. We're gonna make sure we have the right backup. Here comes Mr. Sheldon. We will make sure you are staying correctest by staying a Sheldon apart. Good job, Royals. Remember, six feet of distance on campus is the royal way. This is how we will keep each other safe. San Marcos is the best. While you're on campus, other things might look different for COVID safety, like directional paths. We will use these to make sure that there is room for students to get through campus safely.
Well, we got a taste of that video. Thank you, everyone. We just wanted to show you how we can really turn this into a positive experience for our students, and I want to thank Principal Glazer for sending this video to us. Thank you, Board President Ford.
In the interest of time, I just want to thank everyone for being understanding of some of the technology problems that we're having. And I want to just assure everyone that in meeting in person, we have taken every precaution that's necessary. In fact, just the same precautions that we have done at our schools. So with that, I think it's time to begin the first report, and that is the secondary return to in-person learning. And we'll begin the evening with this report. We've allocated 30 minutes to it, and I will turn this item over to Superintendent Maldonado.
Thank you, President Ford. Stated earlier, we are bringing to the board a report on our preparations to open secondary school, grades seven through 12. I'm gonna turn it right over to Ms. Carey. I also want to thank Susan Klein Rothschild, who's with us today, to bring us up to date on our case rates. So Ms. Carey?
Yes, can everyone hear me? Good. Well, good afternoon, President Ford and members of the board and Superintendent Maldonado. It's a good day, March 9th here, to be discussing the return to our secondary schools and to in-person learning imminently on the horizon, as we hope. So what we'll do right now, if we are displaying this slide, it's hard for me to tell if we've got the slide deck running. Okay, there we go. So I'll just begin by framing what criteria are essential in order to enable us to return to in-person learning? And really, for the secondary schools at this point, it's all about case rate. And we have some encouraging news on the case rate front from recent days and even from this morning that I know our public health officials will be sharing directly with us momentarily. But we have been setting our sights on that adjusted case rate of seven per 100,000, and more recently, on an adjusted case rate of below 10, provided that enough California residents who are identified as being in the equity quartile receive both doses of the vaccine. So again, that's been the threshold we've been eyeing, but we also are required to complete and post safety plans as a district and by individual school site. And that part, we have done. Next slide. As we saw in the opening with Superintendent Maldonado's opening remarks, we have our schools underway to welcome students ready and eager to do so. And as it stands, we have planned orientation activities for new students to commence next week. That's gonna be prioritizing seventh-grade students, ninth-grade students, and any new students who have not yet been able to have the experience of coming onto their junior high or high school campus because they're new to the area, because they're coming to us from private schools. So we are prepared to be very flexible. We know that we might need to pivot very soon or later down the road, depending on case rate. But I wanted to make sure that everyone knows that as it stands now, we have plans in place for orientation experiences for all students who have not yet had that opportunity to navigate their campuses and receive that warm welcome as we customarily offer. In preparation for that, families will begin receiving iPass notifications, which of course, iPass is our daily screening tool, later this week, in a couple days, so that we can get in that habit of filling out iPass daily. Next slide. Now that we've reviewed what must occur, thank you. Now that we've reviewed what must take place in order for secondary schools to return to in-person learning, I wanted to also take an opportunity to let people know that we are doing more than is required in the realm of health and safety preparedness with the capacity of our facilities, with creative and expanded staffing to support return to in-person learning. And of course, I wanted to highlight that families in secondary, in our secondary grades, just like the families in our elementary grades, had the choice to opt into in-person learning or to remain in distance learning. At this point, I think Susan Klein Rothschild is with us, and I'd like to turn it over to her so she can help us understand more about the new and recently released metrics relating to case rates.
I'm very excited to join you tonight with some fast-breaking news. Let's start first with our adjusted case rate. We've been working to get that case rate down. Fewer COVID cases in our community means it's safer for all of us and there's less likelihood of transmission of the disease. As of today, our number is 9.7 adjusted case rate. Yes, we're still in the purple tier, but we're getting very close to the red tier. And that means our unadjusted case rate is 10.9. The other measures we measure are helping us look at the positivity rate of the test. People who take the test, how many are positive? And the health equity metric, which is for people who are more vulnerable communities in our county, are they getting the same access to tests and the same services and the same COVID rates? Are they decreasing? So we want to look at all those factors. Next slide, please. So this is really looking at our case rates and our positivity rate. Now, if you look at that, everyone who takes the test, who gets tested for COVID, what percentage of those are positive? You'll see on the right-hand side, it's really going down. That's lovely. It's already in red and orange tiers for the positivity rate and the health equity rate. The only measure that we're not in the reddier tier at this point is our positivity rate, our case COVID rate. Excuse me. Next slide, please. Thank you. Oh, good. I can see better. Appreciate that. So here's what our COVID case rate is, and we've been looking at it and watching it so closely. I want you to know that if you look on the right-hand side, we've stopped going down just as sharply as we had in the past. So we want to really keep that angle down. That means fewer cases in the community. We're watching it closely. Right now, it's 9.7. For us now, to get into the red tier, it would be seven or less. And that is when currently, we could begin secondary education. But there's some new information. Next slide, please. I think that's, that's, okay. So the state has determined, since we're vaccinating so many people, that when as an entire state, the state of California, when we have 2 billion doses of vaccine given to people who are in the lowest quartile, who are in the most disadvantaged communities, they've said, "We're going to change the metric for when the red tier begins. We're going to make it 10 cases per 100,000." So that means when the state of California has administered 2 million doses to that quartile, they will change it to 10 cases. I can tell you now, they've administered approximately 1.8 million doses. We're very close. And our case rate right now, adjusted case rate, is 9.7, which means it's below 10. We could easily move into the red tier in two ways. One, because our case rate goes down to seven or lower. Or two, because the 2 million doses of vaccine are given in the county, resulting in the change in the number for the red tier means secondary schools can open. Either one of those two situations, and we are very close. The best crystal ball I have, talking to the experts, is that that could really happen within the next week or two. Next slide, please. Oh, the vaccine distribution. Let me talk a little bit about that. So we've been pushing very hard about getting vaccines out. And of course, Santa Barbara Unified and the community has advocated strongly for us to do that. We have some new news on that as of today. So in the last week, the first week of doses being given to TK through 12th grade, there were approximately 1,200 doses given. And for this week, the plan was to give approximately the same number of doses, which is a good number, but not where we want to be. There have been a lot of efforts made behind the scenes. I want to tell you, I really want to give kudos to all of our partners, all of the hospitals across the county, our public health department, many others who are making things happen. As of today, Cottage Health has opened up many, many vaccinations for educators. So educators can go online on the Cottage Health website and sign up for vaccination appointments. They're through Thursday, Friday, and Saturday this weekend. And we expect that to continue because we have been talking about a third-party administrator, Blue Shield, coming and taking over the administration of vaccine statewide. And in our county, in April, it looks like Cottage Health will begin on my turn as soon as tomorrow. Thus, the vaccines and the administration will come from Blue Shield to Cottage Health, and it will begin coming in larger doses and offering more vaccination times and schedules for educators. Now, we know that in the North County, it'll take a little longer, and we have different arrangements with each hospital, working with Blue Shield. An estimate, and I want to say, I think a good estimate is that we could have vaccinations for every member of school, at least one vaccination dose by the end of March, which is a huge step forward. And a lot of people put a lot of effort into that. So for those who are educators, I hope that you're getting online and signing up for those that are this weekend. We're still going to continue the process we have for some of our other hospitals, and we're still going to continue to advocate and move forward as quickly as possible. That is my very best news today. Thank you. I don't know if there's another slide for me. Please.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Susan, and thank you for delivering such good news and specifically for explaining the changes to the threshold for entering into red tier, which of course is so relevant to the conversation about returning to in-person learning for secondary grades. I did want the board to know about several specific efforts that helped to underpin our readiness for returning to in-person learning. Mentioned already, the school safety plans posted. I want to assure the board that we have our safety protocols and supplies in place. We have done extensive testing of ventilation, including changing of air filtration systems and measuring different types of classrooms, just as in elementary. We have all sites, as of yesterday, using bell schedules that are designed to support the in-person hybrid learning model. So that was an important shift to make so we would be ready to pivot whenever we may soonest do so. Our staff, our secondary-certificated staff, will all be on-site tomorrow, and our classified staff have already been reporting to the work site. We have student and staff testing efforts underway. Of course, there are specific high-contact outdoor sports which require testing in order for student athletes to participate, and student athletes and coaches must be tested. But also, we have our baseline student and staff testing for those situational cases where that's requested. We've just heard a great update from Susan Klein Rothschild about the progress of staff vaccination availability. Last Friday, we notified families of their confirmed program model selection, and that is again, in-person hybrid or distance learning, and also of their group assignment. So for those families and students opting for in-person learning, they were assigned to Group A, which meets Mondays, Thursdays on campus, or Group B, which comes to campus Tuesdays and Fridays. There are students in Group C who are the students that are remaining in a distance-learning-only format. And we even have additional groups for those cohorts of students who we will be able to serve more than two days a week on campus because we've already identified them as having more acute learning needs, and we have been serving them in that way. And that will continue. I wanted to make sure that the board knew that as well. We have, we are continuing to support our teachers through the various transitions that we've experienced in the last 12 months, and it is almost precisely 12 months to the day since we closed our schools due to COVID. We have our Wednesday schedules that help to support not only time for teachers' preparation, specifically this week, that involves setting up the right classroom technology so that teachers can effectively support Groups A, B, and C. But also, Wednesday afternoons will provide certificated staff and other staff with the opportunity to support students with targeted interventions. And we know throughout the course of this year just how important that opportunity is. Finally, communication with families is not a one-time event. We had a big push last week and lots of informational principal chats and webinars. Information and communication has been pushed out in writing numerous times. We are going with message abundancy, message redundancy, and we know it's a lot for families to take in. But at this point, it's just important to us to have ongoing communication because things are developing quickly and in some cases are changing under our feet, even as we, you know, we want to stay, make sure that that communication is current. So next slide. Just to reiterate, while we are waiting on the county public health word around case rate, all of these other domains of preparation have been attended to. And we are ready. We are ready and waiting. For the board's information, next slide. We want to be sure you knew what our program enrollment was like for shifting to in-person hybrid learning. And what you'll see here is the majority of families and students who, I know Mr. Rouse will get that up, but I'll just narrate in the meantime. The majority of students and families who were surveyed in November, elected to stick with their choice, we see that 66%, two-thirds of families are going to be remaining within person that was their original choice, and that 23% are going to be remaining with distance learning. That's the red segment here. If you look up at green and orange, you can kind of see the differences. The orange slice is bigger than the green slice. A few more families elected to switch from in-person to distance learning than the reverse, from distance to in-person learning, which is fine. There are a number of reasons for that. Some are instructional, some are related to sense of safety or personal family circumstance. But what that means is we have room in our classrooms and campuses to accommodate all students who elected in-person learning. Next slide shows a breakdown by school. And I'll show, I'll just direct everyone's attention. It's hard to see on the screen, but if you can see through our Zoom presentation to the right-hand bar graph, you can see that it's a very roundable number. We've got a 70-30 split, is the number folks can walk around with, between the red portion there, which is families and students electing for in-person hybrid learning, and blue is remaining in a distance-only format. And of course, you can see the breakdown by school. I will note that LaCuesta Alta Vista aren't reflected here. I don't want people to think that's an oversight. That's because there are unique program models across those five programs under the umbrellas of those two schools and Principal Lauren Berlin. And so there are just different dynamics happening for those school sites. For example, LaCuesta is able to serve all students in person due to the different caseloads and configurations of classrooms at LaCuesta. Next, we had the opportunity, and really quite the privileged opportunity, Superintendent Maldonado, myself, and Ms. Wooster-Dorfman to meet with our Student Advisory Council yesterday to review a lot of this information with them and to elicit their feedback about being on the threshold, being on the cusp of coming back now that it's not theory and it really does seem imminent. And we asked them about their fears and hopes. And so we wanted to be able to share that with you. You can see that students do have fears. They have, some fears are related to behaviors and safety and the pandemic, and some are related to what school will be like as they experience school in-person, especially because some students will be in-person and some won't be. And so, you know, what are some of the things that could come up related to that? But I wanted to be sure that I landed with and ended with hopes, the students' hopes. And they really hope that everything goes smoothly. I can't tell you how poignant it is to talk to our seniors who are just so eager to come back and finish their educational careers on their campuses. They don't want people to feel sick, but they really want people to be well in all respects. You know, they really yearn to be connected with one another in-person and to be able to tell a lot of the stories that we knew were coming out of our elementary schools last week as people reconnected in-person. So later in the board meeting, we will be asking for the board to authorize the return to in-person learning for grades seven through 12, pending our county's designation as being in the red tier. At this point, we just have a slide showing you that we do have all of our school safety plans ready, translated, and posted. And I am here to answer any questions, or staff can as well, that you may have.
Thank you so much. At this time, we are also going to open it up to public comments. So Ms. Trupheo, do we have any public comments about the students returning to in-person learning and secondary?
Thank you, President Ford. Yes, we do have one public comment, and it is Mr. Zachary Loots. Mr. Loots, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, good afternoon, everyone. My name is Zachary Loots. I teach chemistry at Santa Barbara High. I'm looking forward to welcoming my students back in person, but I'm really frustrated with the district's insistence that all of the teachers have to show up to campus on days when all of our students are scheduled to be learning remotely, starting tomorrow. I have colleagues who are gonna have to commute all the way from Oxnard or Camrio just to sit in their empty classrooms and Zoom teach for a total of 90 minutes of class time, which doesn't make a lot of sense. And I know just a few days ago, the district provided some reasons for this mandate, but the reasons they provided don't make sense. They seem like nonsense. It's pretty clear to me that the real reason for this mandate is just optics. District administrators want to look good and seemingly to that vocal minority who think that all the teachers are lazy and that we can't be trusted to do our jobs as professionals. And by holding firm to this mandate, the district is signaling to teachers that they are aligned with those voices, that they don't actually trust us to be professionals, that they don't trust us to decide for ourselves that they don't trust us to decide for ourselves whether we need to access our classrooms to teach remotely. And the district's public statements praising teachers and our professionalism feel empty when they issue mandates like this. I'm not, I'm just not sure that the district or the board fully appreciate how disheartening and disrespectful it feels to a lot of us teachers who have been working tirelessly for the past year, helping to carry this district through the pandemic. We're consistently asked to extend grace and be accommodating with students who are struggling, and we do. Well, right now, we are struggling. The teachers are struggling. And we are getting none of that grace from our district leadership. I don't honestly expect you to change your minds about this policy at this point, but I do want you to understand the message that it sends to us teachers. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And President Ford, that concludes public comment on this item.
Great, thank you so much for the presentation. And we're so excited to be on this precipice of opening all schools. And I just had a couple of questions. Thank you to the teacher who spoke about that Wednesday, to start off with the Wednesday. If you could explain the rationale. My interest is for students to be back on campus on Wednesday. I understood that in the fall, there was much more belief that COVID was transmitted on surfaces. And so, therefore, a deep cleaning was required on Wednesdays. But it seems as though we understand now from Dr. Fauci and everyone else that it's really with breathing and not that. And so, if that deep cleaning isn't necessary on Wednesdays, it's my belief that students should be in person as much as safely possible. So, is that something that you all are working on? Or if you could speak to that, please? Thank you.
I think I can speak to it. Thank you for that question. And I'll look to my colleagues if I miss a point. It is true that in the fall, we had different directions as to what was the kind of setup we needed. And we learned after time that it was a ventilation in the classroom. Given all of that, after seeing what elementary opening looked like, which we expected to be a longer time to get children into the classrooms and so forth, we are actually now considering a revisit of our plans for hybrid for both elementary and secondary. And we may be able to accommodate children on Wednesdays. And so, that'll be something that we just need a little time to put together, to bring back to the board and to communicate to everyone as we plan and move forward with getting everybody back in school. And I'll ask Dr. Beckio, Ms. Carey, or Ms. Escobedo, is there anything else we want to add to that?
Thank you for the question. And again, what we have learned about COVID is that we can depend on it changing and we having to pivot and adjust as needed. And so, even back in the fall, that was everything that Superintendent Maldonado just shared has, was, what our thinking has evolved for elementary very particularly. I'd like to just inform the board that part of that thinking and planning does include this idea that we still can't bring back both Groups A and B on Wednesday. So, it would still have to be on an alternate schedule because we are still under the same distance restraints for safety that we have to follow. And so, that is all part of the planning and process. And since we are just learning how this system is working and rolling out in real time and awaiting our movement and where we are in the tiers, it is definitely something that we are thinking of and hoping to be able to evolve in the plan, just like we knew we would continue to be evolving as the year went by. Again, there's been so many changes already that our teachers and parents have had to deal with. So, we want to be very mindful and thoughtful of how we roll out this next stage. And it's been a staggered, you know, rollout. Our big goal is to make sure we are getting input and we're communicating very clearly so that it is as least disruptive as possible and most effective and productive.
I appreciate that. And I think we share the same value system of as much time in the classroom is the goal. And I just want to push to get that. And I know you're, I know you're on board, but as much as you can quickly get to that point, I will just share. I think the opening of elementary has gone wonderfully well. I hear from teachers about their issues with Wednesday. But I also hear from parents and have experiences myself that, you know, the schedule is quite truncated with a lunch starting at 11:00 a.m. for elementary, then moving into asynchronous from 12:00 to 2:00. That is a long time for the little ones to not be with an instruction. And so, if we could even on a rotating basis get those kids back into class and start, I mean, my goal would, if you're prepared, would be to start with secondary, with Wednesdays back in the classroom in some form or fashion, however it makes sense. I think that's really essential. And I just also want to use this opportunity. I understand, but I'm getting, still getting questions of why hybrid. And so, I think it's important to restate why we need, why we can't have a full class back in, especially with those who are hearing about Galita going back, I think, four days a week, et cetera. So, Superintendent Maldonado, if you could just explain that. I think it's time to refresh the memory of the public as to why we can't be doing that now.
Absolutely. So, and I'm glad we still have Susan Klein. I know she has to run to another meeting and she can also add. But it is my understanding that we still need to maintain the social distancing in every classroom. And so, that does not afford us the space to bring back 24 children to a classroom or 22, whatever that number is. And that's what causes us to go into a hybrid model. I do want to emphasize what Ms. Escobedo said, and that is, we will continue to reiterate and redesign as appropriate and look at all our spaces. We know that the warmer weather is coming. That'll allow us to use some outdoor space. We have our tents up. We have all those things happening. And I think, once we see all of how that will work, we will make moves to try to get as many kids in person as possible within the limits of guidance from public health.
So, I'm just going to keep pushing here a little bit. Is it possible to just, to do an A-B rotation for Wednesdays, you know, at the start of secondary return?
Yes, can we just pause on that? Susan, I wanted to just add one more thing with your first question on hybrid.
Oh, great, thank you.
Susan?
Thank you. I just wanted to explain, one of the things that we've learned in the last year, you noted that we've learned a lot about COVID in the last 12 months. And we've learned that this layering effect of doing all transmission is very important. Face coverings and physical distance are at the top of the list. Honestly, we are going to be continuing those for a long time, even after vaccinations. So, when we've looked at the schools that have opened, and we've had four schools, four high schools open in Santa Barbara County since the fall, we've had little transmission, and they've been very strict about following those guidelines. The ventilation, the face coverings, the physical distance, cleaning and disinfecting and contact tracing, those are all really important. So, however the district can open school and maintain those five elements, it's really important. What we don't want to do is back off, because that's when we'll have transmission and we'll go in the opposite direction. So, those physical distance and face coverings and those things are important. So, as long as the school district can find a way within those, that's great. But I would urge you not to give up on those very important actions.
Absolutely, thank you.
I did want to speak to the desire to start the return in-person learning and secondary with the Wednesday in-person learning or rotating A and B cohorts. I mean, the short answer is yes, we'd love to see students on campus on Wednesdays. What we would like to have the opportunity to observe, what we feel we need to have the opportunity to observe first, though, is differently from elementary, where a group of students is with a teacher for the whole of the time, if not the bulk, if not the whole of the time that they're on campus. By design, in secondary, students will be moving from one classroom and teacher to multiple classrooms and teachers. So, the schedules that we have built have extra-long passing periods, 15 minutes in the high school schedule, 20 minutes in the junior high schedule to make sure we can safely do those transitions between the multiple spaces. And then, the Wednesday schedule is consistent for high school, 15-minute passing periods, but shorter, it's half. For the junior highs, it's 10 minutes. So, we would like the chance to just observe what those transitions are like and then use that information to understand whether or not we need the time we have built in or we need more maybe than the time we've built in to make those transitions safely to the multiple spaces that students will be learning in, in person. So, that would be, my strong recommendation is to allow us to begin with the schedule we've put in place, observe what those transitions particularly are like, those middle-of-the-day transitions. Not so much the entry and the arrival and the dismissal, but those in-between transitions from class period to class period. And then, make adjustments if needed to the Wednesday schedule and bring students then too.
And one last point I'd like to make about that is we also want to explore the idea of having some children who definitely need to be in person more than others, who have vulnerabilities that cause them to not really succeed in a distance-learning model. So, that'll be another plan of things we'll look at as we're trying to iterate new designs. So, the answer is yes. And we will continue to plan further to bring back to this board other ideas on how to do that. And we agree with your assessment that in-person is better, and that's the ultimate goal.
Excellent. I'd feel comfortable if this was, you know, these trial, this trial period, which I understand is necessary, would be a matter of weeks, not months. And that would be, and I think, you know, communicating back to the board, communicating to the public about that. Because again, it's just, it doesn't comport that there's very few students on campus on Wednesdays when the CDC guidelines don't require that as we interpret them as to do previously. So, you hear my gist. I would like to potentially have the vote or the motion for approval for secondary, include some language to, you know, as many days as possible to, so if I could just add that caveat to the end of the motion, and I'm happy to do that, President Ford, so that the emphasis is made that this is the bench that we're starting with two days. And we are building as quickly as we possibly can in order to, again, achieve that magic that happens when people are in person and a teacher is helping a student and teaching the way that we know teachers want to teach and students want to learn. So, thank you for that. I'm planning on doing that as a motion when we get to that point after my colleagues have had a chance to ask questions.
Thank you. I think it's very important. I'm not 100% sure it needs to be part of the motion, but I do think it's important for the board to express its opinions about this matter, especially because we have sent a very strong message that deep cleaning is not needed on Wednesdays. And without the need for deep cleaning on Wednesdays, the logical next statement is, then why aren't kids on campus? And so, I want to, I must put my other board members on the spot. And I'd just like to know how you would like us to go forward. Ms. Alvarez, first, what are you thinking about with regard to Wednesdays?
Thank you. I agree with Board Member Capes. My ultimate goal is to have students back on campus as much as possible. I also see Wednesdays as an opportunity, an opportunity for teachers to do the targeted instruction, the targeted intervention that Ms. Carey mentioned. Also, an opportunity for the teachers to get to more familiar with their students in that afternoon that they may not have a schedule of classes. So, my ultimate goal is to have students back on campus five days a week. If I could do that, I would do it right now. So, thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Munoz, do you have a thought?
Yes, I also would like, you know, in terms of the equity for the students and the learning, you know, that has, that they, you know, obviously need to catch up and want to get back into it. I'm certainly supportive of having the students, as Ms. Capes and Ms. Alvarez have stated, you know, back on campus when it's safe and when staff is able to do that. And of course, I also would like to see the teachers be available to the students in order to, you know, prepare, be available to them. And it's going to be a transition. I mean, just like this meeting, you know? Everything with COVID, we've tried to be, you know, as flexible as possible. And the, you know, underlying, the main goal is for the students to be able to continue with their learning and to be able to get back to, you know, the regular, as much as possible, schedule and learning that they can.
Thank you. Ms. Capes, do you have any other comments or questions? Otherwise, I'll go on to Ms. Alvarez.
Yeah, I mentioned to speak to the many letters we got from teachers about.
I just, one more. You can tell I'm focused on Wednesdays today, on a Tuesday. I would like to speak to the teachers who wrote into us. We got maybe 12 to 15 letters about the need, as the public speaker spoke to, of them being in the classroom. I just want to clarify. I understand from speaking with Superintendent Maldonado that if somebody does, if a teacher does have a hardship, a childcare issue or otherwise, that those exceptions can be made to their presence in person. Is that correct?
That is correct. We do have a process for any extenuating circumstance that a teacher has that prevents them from being able to show up in person on Wednesdays. And all staff have received the access to that form. And that will be considered through our HR department.
Okay, thank you for that. So, yeah, I'm, thank you, President Ford. No more comments from me about Wednesdays.
Thank you. Ms. Alvarez, do you have any questions or comments?
I'd like to thank Susan Klein Rothschild. She's been an amazing partner through this journey. Thank you. And you're a real treasure. We really appreciate all your help. Also, thank you to the teachers. I know this is extremely difficult. It keeps changing, changes for us too. We appreciate you. And as Ms. Capes mentioned, I know there is a process for hardships. I've spoken to a couple of teachers about the process and encouraged them to speak to Dr. Beckio. So, I am confident that that's taking place. Thank you, and let's keep moving forward.
Thank you. And Ms. Munoz, please.
Yes, I want the teachers to know that we highly value them. And we know that they have been, you know, going above and beyond during this time with COVID. And that we do have a process in place for them. If they're having difficulty, you know, to please let us know, you know, because, you know, HR can work with them and try to be, you know, as flexible as possible. I did have a question about students, the, I'm sorry, the school staff. If the, my question was about school staff, such as the office staff, the custodians and such, are they, will they be on campus on Wednesdays as a regular schedule? Would that be, okay. Yeah, I wanted to make sure that that was the case.
So, yes, Ms. Munoz, great question. Our staff will be on campus, all staff, maintenance, food services. I, I would be remiss if I didn't say they haven't on, they have never gone home. And so those, that's, those classifications of staff members have continued to be on throughout the week.
Oh, perfect. Okay, so I think that that also is, you know, as much as possible for, you know, we do understand that there are extenuating circumstances, but we also want the teachers to be available to our students as, as much as possible.
Thank you. I just have a couple of comments. First of all, I want to thank Ms. Carey. I thought it was an excellent, well-organized presentation. I really appreciate it. And the addition of the hopes and the dreams of the students were really moving and inspiring to me. So thank you. I also just want to clarify that no one on this board doesn't trust teachers or thinks teachers are lazy. We are eternally grateful to teachers for what they have done, for what they have shown, the courage and the way that they have come forward as heroes. And so despite any disagreements we may have about schedules, I want you to know that we trust you. We think that the world of you and we're eternally grateful. I just wanted to ask a couple of questions. First of all, Ms. Carey, on the qualifications for the acute need students that will be coming back more than two days a week, are these students who have already been coming still a continuation of the small cohorts?
Yes, so we're using very similar kinds of criteria for identifying those students. But I want to add that we have also been iterating those cohorts within the parameters of safety protocol and cohort controls to make sure that any seats that are, have, have been going underutilized or unutilized are then offered to the next student who may be able to participate in that. So that is something that has continued to grow and expand incrementally and safely over the course of the school year. And that is precisely the students that we would be serving more than two days a week.
Thank you. I also wanted to clarify either with Superintendent Maldonado or Ms. Klein Rothschild about the importance of being five days at seven. Five days at seven qualifies us for the red tier, correct?
I will let Ms. Rothschild. May I speak to that, President Ford? It's, it's been a little confusing because the California Department of Public Health gave us a certain number of days, but they only give us the metric once a week. So we don't know when the five days start. So that's probably something that we need to get clarity on. And they've agreed that, for instance, when we came down to 25, the first time they told us, they said, you've been there five days. So we didn't know the whole time. So as soon as we hit that mark where we are allowed to reopen, we will be communicating that directly. We do not anticipate having any metrics given anything other than every Tuesday. We know things change, but that's what we know at this point.
Thank you. So I guess I would just reiterate, Ms. Maldonado, that I think this board is adamantly excited about having secondary come back and will be happy to take a vote later. And also, I think that we are adamant about using the school as much as possible and bringing kids to campus as much as possible, including Wednesdays. And with that, do you have any other comments before we go on to our next report item?
No other comments at this time, thank you.
Board members, any other questions or comments? Because we will go on to our next, our study session, and then we should be ready to vote later on.
We're in a order, I believe we need to vote, correct?
No, it's later in the agenda.
Oh, there you go, thanks.
In the action, I had agenda item. Anyway, so we'll go forward then. And I'm very excited now to have the beginning of our board study session regarding grading in our school district. A little background for everyone. I think an interest in this topic, and I believe it was initially requested by Ms. Alvarez, was a result of our review of grading practices and data earlier this school year that showed alarming and increased disproportionality. And this led to our board policy adoption that eliminated Fs while we were in distance learning. And this was also with the acknowledgement that we have an obligation to understand grading practices in our district as we go forward to ensure equity in every aspect of our instructional program. So now I will ask Superintendent Maldonado and the cabinet to proceed and of course introduce our esteemed guest, Joe Feldman.
Thank you so much, Board President. All right, so again, thank you for bringing this topic to us. The purpose is just to look at our existing situation. We really want to help understand what has been going on in Santa Barbara Unified and also share with you some future thinking after we've had our time together with the study session. We want to be able to look at the issues of grading through the lens of our teachers, our students, and our families. And then point out that this is not just a local conversation with Santa Barbara Unified, but it's a state and nation, national conversation. We do know that there is disproportionality in our system when it comes to our grade, our grades, and they come, they fall along the economic and ethnicity status. And we need to confront and remove some of the barriers that we see happening there. It is an important step as we begin to operationalize our equity agenda that you as a board, this cabinet, and other members of our school district have so proudly shared. And that was the biggest draw for me to come and work for all of you and be of service. So we're not recommending any action. We mostly want to achieve our objectives set forth in our agenda. And we won't be asking you to reconsider any board policy changes at this time because we want to make sure we have time to work within our staff and help people understand the ways that we need to learn and grow. I do want to thank Joe Feldman, who's the author of the book, Grading for Equity, and an expert on this topic. He'll be helping us to facilitate this meeting along with Ms. Carey and the rest of the cabinet with you here today. So even though we are in the middle of the pandemic, we're still doing great work around equity. So with that, I'm turning it over to Ms. Carey and the team.
Thank you, Superintendent Maldonado. And I echo the appreciation for the opportunity to spend meaningful time on this topic that's oh so important today. I couldn't have framed it any better than Board President Ford and Superintendent Maldonado already did. And just to reiterate that, that we've been on a journey. We were, we were on this journey before the pandemic, but the pandemic has absolutely accelerated the urgency with which we feel we must address the concern of grading. And, and if we can go to that next slide, please, and begin with our slide deck, I'll just remind everyone that grading is one part of our learning landscape. It's a form of assessment, but it carries tremendous weight because grades play a crucial role in students' lives on a number of levels. In order to deliver grades at the end of a marking period that are meaningful, and by meaningful, I mean fair and consistent, accurate and equitable, we need to be clear about what it is that grades are measuring in the first place. What is it that students need to know by grade level and by subject? We have plans to make that publicly visible to everyone this summer throughout our whole system, for all grades in our system. Answering the important question of how we know when students learn what it is we want them to learn, that occurs through a range of assessments. It can be a variety of ongoing classroom-based, even teacher-generated assessments that we call formative assessment, but also through summative assessments. So it's really measure the mastery of standards and, and concepts and content acquired. In a sense, grades are the, the ultimate summative assessment. And again, they have, they're so high stakes in our system, from the early grades through to grade 12 and beyond. So thank you for tuning in and everyone paying attention to this important topic as we unpack it and we hear from various perspectives. And we also learn together from, from some experts, including some local experts in our own system. Next slide. I want to be very clear, since it's a board study session, about the fact that we have very concrete objectives for our learning time together. We want to make sure that we're able to understand together how traditional grading practices have caused unintended harm. You'll hear a lot more about that. We are going to feature some teachers from Santa Barbara Unified and to learn more about ways they have shifted practice. That will help us understand which strategies we can identify, expand, and learn more about as our system as a whole moves forward in this direction. And most specifically, how we will manage that change effort organizationally. So at this point, it's my great pleasure to introduce Joe Feldman, who is the author of Grading for Equity, and his colleague, Mark Boswell. They're both of the Crescendo Ed Group. And the Crescendo Ed Group has worked with schools across the nation, as we talked about earlier. This is something that, that districts and schools nationwide are contending with and are shifting practice around. So without any further ado, I think Mark has the mic first.
You were close. I'll take the mic first, away from her.
You can have it, Joe.
Welcome, Joe Feldman.
Well, hello. Good afternoon and evening. I want to thank Sean and Superintendent Maldonado and Board Chair Ford, or President Ford and the rest of the board for investing your time and brains and hearts into this work of better understanding grading and recognizing how significant a lever it is to making our schools more equitable. I'm Joe Feldman. Just a quick, short bio. I'm a former high school English and American history teacher. I was an assistant principal in New York City. I was principal of a school in DC as well as in Northern California. I was an assistant, Director of K-12 Instruction in Union City, California. And then in 2013, left that work to explore how I could better support teachers and administrators in areas that I felt I hadn't received the support. I wanted, and grading kept coming up over and over and over. And the more I researched the issue, the more I found that it wasn't just pedagogically important to improve how we grade, but actually had equity implications for the work. So I'll say a little bit about our organization in a minute, but I will pass the baton to Mark Boswell, my colleague, to introduce himself.
I'm just handing the mic back, Joe, I appreciate that. Hello, everybody. My name is Mark Boswell. I've been working with Crescendo Ed and Joe for about two, a little over two years now. And I actually started this practice off as a, as a teacher, as an educator, and working with Joe very closely and understanding the impact that our grading can have on our students and people that look a little bit more like me, right? I've been in education for about 20 years. And I say that knowing that I've been in education since I can remember because my grandmother was a career educator. And I spent many, many an hour in the summer times and the school times underneath my grandmother, just kind of absorbing all that she, she was and is. That being said, I'm, I'm really excited to share this work with you all today, knowing that it's really going to impact a lot of students. So I will go ahead and get us kicked off. Joe, how are you feeling about that?
All right. So as folks have said, this is not just a localized bit of work, but is actually something that is happening throughout the country. And since 2013, and it has only accelerated in the past year or two. And as was referenced, during the pandemic, it has shown a bright, bright spotlight on how our traditional grading practices are so inapplicable to modern teaching and learning and actually, in many ways undermine equity. We work with schools and districts all across the country. So everyone from, you know, your folks, your neighbors in LAUSD and across the country in New York City, as well as in county offices of education, independent schools, charter school networks, universities and colleges. A lot of post-secondary faculty and administrators are becoming very interested in better equipping their faculty with understanding how to improve grading. Even like Stanford School of Education and Cal Schools of Education are now beginning to incorporate this work into their teacher education programs. And teacher advocacy organizations like the AFT and NEA are all getting behind this work, which even though it can feel isolating, we try and find lots of ways to connect all these groups together because we are tackling something that is sometimes called the third rail of education. It has, grading has such tremendous, tremendous power, but it's very hard for many of us to touch it. And so those are just some ways to connect with us. Certainly, we invite you to have additional conversations or continue your learnings either through any of these avenues. I will now pass the baton back to Mark to tell us a little bit about what our time together will be and what it won't be.
Yeah, we, we definitely want to do a little bit of framing so that you understand what you're going to get out of today in this, in this kind of short time that we have together, right? So what this will not be today, just so you know, this will not be a complete and comprehensive training in equitable grading practices. We're only, I mean, I think we got a couple 20-minute chunks together, so I'm not together for that long. And I just want to reiterate, and I say this pretty frequently, this work is dismantling systems and shifting culture. And I'm a history teacher by trade, so I can go ahead and let you know that that doesn't really happen in an hour, hour and a half time period. It takes some time and effort and work. This is, will not be spray on PD. You will not be able to walk out of here, and yeah, I might have been a little excited for coming to America too. But this, you will not walk out of this just an equitable grader, right? What, but what we will be able to do today is we will introduce the what, the why, and the hows of equitable grading. Right, what we definitely want to do is give you a lens for reflecting on and examining your own practice, grading assessments and practice and things like that, your belief set. We want to arm the board with a vocab and some ideas to kind of open and normalize these discussions about grading so that you can have these discussions elsewhere. And we want to make sure that we give you, we always want to try to fold in a little bit of time and space to imagine kind of what this looks like moving forward. So that being said, I'm going to slow down. And what we're going to do is do a, a quick activity. And it may be something that you've done before, but let me just do a quick little recap. We're actually going to do a free write. So this is my teacher version of a stall so that you can find someplace to write. Hopefully, pen and paper. If you need to open a Google Doc, like I said, this is my stall tactic so that you can get to a place where you can find a safe place to write. And what you're going to do in this free write is you're just going to write. And we want you to not try to write the perfect sentence or worry about dotting all those i's and t's, but instead, we want to free you up to just write this idea. And if you hit a block and you're, you don't know what to write, I mean, you would just continue writing. I don't know what to write until you free up and your brain frees up to continue writing about the topic. All right, so now that you know what a free write is, here's the topic, right? What we would like you to do is to write about a specific experience related to receiving a grade as a student or as a parent or caregiver of a student that was very powerful for you, positively or negatively. And this could happen anywhere along your educational career, right? This could happen, this could have happened in preschool, this, all the way through post-grad, right? And when you're doing that, please hold on to two things. We want you to hold on to the emotions and feelings. What are you feeling in that moment? What is it, what, what's going on with you internally? And then kind of zoom up to that 30,000 feet and think about, if you could look down and watch the scene, what are you seeing? What is, what are the intellectual and cognitive pieces that are happening? So I'm going to give you two minutes. No, it's not a lot of time, but two minutes to just free write about this topic, the, your, your, your powerful grading experience. So your two minutes, I'm going to pull my handy dandy Casio, and your two minutes starts right now. All right, start bringing yourself back. What you'll quickly learn about me, because I'm going to tell you, is that I'm a middle school, I'm a middle school person by trade, which means I'm kind of corny. So this is the thing that I've said in the recent past. Dot that i, cross that t, wherever you are is exactly where you need to be. I know, you can go ahead and use that later. But, um, all right, so here's what I would like for you to do right now is, take about 10, 15 seconds, look at your story. Because normally what we would do with other educators and things like that is we'd meet in small groups, we'd get to share our powerful stories and things like that. And what we would do is try to find a noticing in and across our stories. Unfortunately, we can't quite do that with the way the COVID has put us in a space. But what we'd like for you to do is take 10, 15 seconds and just jot down two to three adjectives that kind of describe your story. And remember, try to hold on to that emotional and intellectual. See if you can get a couple adjectives. So I'm going to give you about 15 seconds to do that right now. All right. And now I'd just like to invite anybody from the board to just kind of share out what are your, your two or three adjectives that, that, that describe your, your powerful story. Laura.
Thank you. Well, with a good experience, the first word I wrote down was pride. And with a negative experience, I wrote down unfair.
Thank you for that, Laura. Thanks for, for opening us up. Would anybody else like to share?
Sure. Regarding my little story, I chose the words powerful, life-changing, and meaningful.
Excellent, thank you for that. I think we have time for a couple more.
I wrote the word hopeful, strong, and meaningful.
Thank you. One more would be great.
I wrote discouraged, sad, and unfair.
Well, excellent. Well, thank you all for sharing. And hopefully, again, what we're trying to do is, in this space when we're doing this, is normalize that we have, there's a range of emotions that we're all having, not just that, but intellectually exactly what happened. So right now, I know we don't have time, but I would love to give you all a little homework board if you want to find each other and share each other's stories later and actually connect on those. I think that'd be a great thing for you all to do. So moving right along in our.
I'll add one thing is that when we do this kind of work with schools and districts, and we ask people to share their stories, we will hear that kind of a range. And we will find that people are able to tap into that memory so quickly. And sometimes it starts bringing people to the kind of anger that they felt at the time, where they feel like this emotional lift. And it just helps all of us grownups remember how deeply connected our own memories are and emotions are to the grades we've received. And it helps heighten our awareness in ways to know that our students might be receiving those all the time at any time in their school experience. So 30 years later, or 10 years later, they will recall how they felt about receiving certain kinds of grades.
Absolutely, thank you for that, Joe. Yeah, yeah. We, we know that, and, and that's, we're going to build the case today, right, about the importance of these things. So let's actually start with, why do we, why are we here talking about grading, right? There's, there are so many aspects about a school, right? Why are Joe and I here to talk about grading? Well, for a lot of people actually, who are actually outside of grading, people think that grading is kind of a simple, a simple task. It's independent of, of student learning, right? And that educators and teachers are just kind of like the, the referees calling the balls and the strikes, right? They're just like, oh, you passed, fail, that's good, that's bad, those sorts of things. But we actually know that there's so much more wrapped in the grading, right? Grading includes things like weighted categories, percents and scales, right? Policies for later missing work, which student actions or performances we're going to grade or not grade. And kind of like, in, in the, the punch point of all of this is that for every single pedagogical decision that an educator makes in a classroom, right? They actually have to decide whether or not they're going to grade it, right? And if they do grade it, how they're going to grade it? How many points is it worth? What do they do if a student doesn't turn it in? Late work consequences, so on and so forth. So for every single educational act, grading is woven into the things that we are doing. And, and teachers actually don't, educators, all of us, we don't learn where to grade or learn how to grade, right? The places that we do learn how to grade are either from our personal experiences, right? So maybe something that was done to us or looking at a colleague, the culture of our space, you know, the department we worked in, even the software that the school is using, right? And this last leg is this kind of education and research leg. And the reason why it's a little, little short, a little stunted is because we don't get a lot of education and research to back how we actually grade, right? And that's actually what Joe and I are here to do. Because if we don't, right, if we don't build up this leg, what we end up doing is we end up just repeating the, we repeat what was done to us, right? And, and Joe and I really want to push back on that because there are so many decisions that are actually about our students that are actually based on their grades. Things like what remediation supports, right? Awards and opportunities, their course placement and graduation eligibility. Even the fact, even the idea of if they can play in the afternoon sport or those sorts of things, the extracurricular eligibility. And then there's two that I, I really want to push because grades will affect our students' employment status, right? Work permit, insurance rates, college acceptance, financial aid. And now what we're actually talking about is students. And now what we're actually talking about is students, we're not just affecting, now we're talking about affecting family income, right? We're not actually talking about just the student and how they're feeling. Talking about affecting family income and we're actually talking about future income for our students, right? And we know though, that this is a kind of a loaded conversation, right? As a, as administrators and teachers talk about grading, what ends up happening is there, there are some emotional reactions. We just talked about your, we just talked about your, your, your grading stories and some things came up. And the same thing happens in a classroom, right? So if an administrator and a teacher needs to talk about grading, well, there are a couple of different ways that there, there are a couple of different reactions. One, as an educator, you get defensive, right? You're like, wait a minute, I know how to grade. I am fair. Don't talk to me about my grades. I know what I'm doing, right? And Joe actually talks about this a lot, that grading is actually one of the last islands of autonomy that educators actually have, right? They're told how to do everything else, but like grading, this is my system. I'm going to make it this way and fair and these bits and pieces. Another thing that could happen is, and actually this was more my style, was when an administrator came to my classroom to talk about my grades. I was like, oh no, here I go, I'm getting fired. I'm out, right? Like here, what did I do wrong? Is this going in that black file, those sorts of things? Or you, you get into that kind of that deep eye roll from educators, right? That, that, oh, here's another initiative, the next buzzword, the next thing that we're going to do for a little bit. And then like, you're going to forget and I'm going to go back to my own thing. But Joe and I are here to say, we got to push past all of those emotions because of how important grading is and how much it affects our students. So I'm going to pass it over to Joe to talk a little bit about why we actually want to talk about grading and why equity is so important to talk about with our grades.
Thanks. And it's important to know that there is no coursework on grading that teachers ever receive in any of their graduate work. It is never addressed. They get a lot of support around assessment design, but not about how to grade. It's usually thought of as, well, there's this symphony of teaching and learning and the coda is the grading. And you'll just kind of take care of that when you get there. And that's how, that's why so many of the practices keep getting replicated, even though there is no research to support what teachers are using. But they're doing the best they can because they've never been given the opportunity to learn what the research says. And it's not just a pedagogically valuable way to improve practice, but it actually has equity implications. We know that you all have had lots of great conversations about equity. And the way we come to it is to recognize that our schools are fit within a legacy of historically not serving groups of students well and have even harming groups of students. And, you know, when we say schools, schools are part of this interwoven fabric of the history of our country. And it's connected with our political systems and capitalist economic systems and housing regulations and all kinds of things. And over, this is over multiple generations. When we talk about groups of students, we mean in particular, students of color, Black students, Latinx, indigenous students, students whose families are of low income, whose first language is not English, and who have special needs. We, as a legacy of schools, have not served those students well. And what that has looked like is that we have denied or excluded those groups from accessing the strengths that are available in our education system, like high quality teaching or high quality curriculum or even non-academic things like the dignity and voice that we've given to those communities in how our schools function. And so it therefore becomes very unsurprising that we can predict the outcomes of student performance based on those characteristics. And I know that every educator in your system and every one of you board members did not go into this work so that we could be able to predict the outcomes of students. So we went in so you couldn't predict outcomes. And we, we really appreciate this quote by Arthur Jones, which is, "All organizations are perfectly designed to get the results they get." We would actually argue that the schools, as we've inherited them, are actually designed to have achievement and opportunity disparities. And that means we have to consider the how grading as a key element of this, of the schools that we've inherited actually are perpetuating the achievement and opportunity gaps without us even realizing it. And it does it in two ways. The first is that our inherited grading systems actually reward students with resources and privilege and punish those without. And it actually makes it harder for students with less privilege and resources from becoming successful in ways we'll talk about. And the last frame I want to give to this is from a quote from Professor Bettina Love out of the University of Georgia, that actually if we're looking to improve the outcomes of students, we may not be able to find the answer in the very system that has been built to create the disparities. We actually have to critically examine some of the structures like grading if in order to make our education system what we believe it can be. So that is really just the frame to why talk about grading in the context of equity. And we'll give you a little bit more information about that history and about its impact on the work that we do. But I want to pass it back to Sean, actually, to hear from, hear from the district around some of the data that it has.
Thank you, Joe. Thank you, Mark. And just building on what you both spoke to about the complexity of the grading issue, I want to appreciate in advance the colleagues that have helped prepare our presentation this evening. And with that, we, we know the grading issue extends through all grade levels and that there are factors in and out of the classroom that of course relate to it. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Escobedo, Assistant Superintendent of Elementary Education.
Thank you, Ms. Carrie. Thank you, Mr. Feldman, Mr. Boswell. What a great way to get us started today. So with that, what does our data story tell us? And, and our data story, just like was said already, was, was really started, we started talking about it or telling that story last fall when we were, when we, when we saw that our, our grading in the fall clearly revealed that in elementary, 76% of our white elementary students received ones or twos in three or more subject areas, compared to 92% of our Latino students who also received ones and twos in more than one subject area. That story last fall also told us that in secondary, 21% of our white students received one or more Ds or Fs, compared to 50% of our Latino students receiving one or more Ds or Fs. So the outcomes of this data analysis have revealed to us that unlike, not different than what we've already heard, that our traditional grading practices have caused unintended harm. That students who are Latinx, socio-economically disadvantaged, emergent multilingual, and/or are students with disabilities are disproportionately negatively impacted. When our stakeholders were presented with this data, their feedback focused around three main findings. Implicit bias exists by virtue of traditional grading practices and teacher preparation programs that are outdated. There is an inherent need for professional learning around equitable grading practices and a need for calibration. Our data story also has provided a clear lens that tells us that there is an urgent need for us to accelerate our efforts towards more equitable grading practices for all of our students. Next slide. So our data story also told us that our student grading experiences revolve around two main factors, academic and non-academic. Academic grades should only reflect students' mastery of academic content and what they have learned on subject matter. Non-academic grades include items such as attendance, participation, and homework. We administered a survey to our secondary students, sixth through 12th grade, to help us better understand the student experiences behind the data that we just saw. And to tell us more about that, I will hand it off to my colleague, Dr. Wagonick.
Thank you, Ms. Escobedo. Good afternoon, Ms. Ford and Board. In January, we conducted a survey of our students to gather data on their experience in distance learning. And we asked a variety of questions. And today I want to speak to you briefly about just a few of those areas that most directly impact grades, and that's supports and homework. So we asked questions that produced both quantitative and qualitative data. 1,889 students, grades six through 12, responded to this survey. And the response rate showed disproportionality across all demographic groups that we measured. Asian Pacific Islanders, Islander, and white students responded at higher rates than Latinx and, and Black students. And then in terms of language status, initially fluent in English students and English-only students responded at higher levels than reclassified or emergent multilingual students. Though we did offer a Spanish version of the survey targeted at our newcomer emergent multilingual students. In terms of economic status, our severely economically disadvantaged students responded less frequently than, than their peers. And our students in sixth grade had the highest response rates, followed by our seniors. So that was a nice balance. Our lowest response rate came from our ninth graders. Next slide, please. So we wanted to know, do students know why they have homework? Do they know why teachers give homework? What is the purpose? So in response to the question, what do you understand the purpose of homework to be? We received a variety of answers with a number of trends emerging that you can see here. Students know that it can be used for review or practice or for teachers to check their understanding. But many also identified homework as busy work that lacks a purpose. Some, in fact, many don't, don't even know the, the purpose. But others do understand that especially during distance learning, more than ever, homework does serve as a time to complete work that was started in class. Even if they don't know the term asynchronous work, what came out of this question really was that they understood that it was time to complete work that was started. Next slide, please. So we also asked students a few questions about supports that they receive. And this question provided us with a quantitative look at which supports are being perceived by students as being most helpful. And as you can see here, family members really stood out as the largest group providing support to students. I think students are, are naturally spending more time with their family right now. But that was a really good indicator to see that they called out their family members as being supports. Teachers, students want to be with their teachers, either one-on-one or in groups. They see that as an important support. Online tutoring, specifically through our paper online system, was called out, as were counselors. So those were the areas that were most frequently indicated in these results. Next slide. We also asked an open-ended question that was designed to allow students to share about the supports that were meaningful to them in an anecdotal way. And through those qualitative responses, five predominant themes emerged. Many students reported having no additional supports. Also, family members again were seen as a very important primary and secondary source of support to students. Next, we also saw that students rely on their classmates and friends, which makes sense. We were talking, we were surveying 11 to 18 year olds. So friends and peers are essential. But again, in the qualitative question, we saw that students do crave time with their teachers. That came up over and over again. And they see this time as essential to their success. Some students went so far as to offer suggestions for the ways in which they could have more time with their teachers in distance learning. And, and we'll, we'll want to look at those more. And then finally, there were a number of students, fair enough to rise to, to the level of a dominant theme of students who do have access to private tutoring that provided them with needed support. And so now I'll call, turn it back over to Ms. Carrie.
Thank you, Dr. Wagonick. And with Sandra's support, we wanted to share with the board a video that compiles the voices of students on this topic. We asked students from a variety of backgrounds and experiences with school and from a variety of our, of our secondary schools about their experiences with grading. We asked them a couple of simple questions. What's been helpful to you? And, and what's been, what have been barriers or challenges for you? So with that, I'll have you listen to the voices of our own students.
What helps me get good grades is the mentors that are provided for us and the academic support with being in a comfortable environment.
Having better communication with my teachers and being more productive.
Coming back to campus and the support I get from my teachers.
Planning out my day the day before and having an organizer full of things that I need to get done that day and maybe that whole week.
The teacher pulled me to the side and asked me if I needed help. And they gave me the opportunity because a student like me does not want to ask in front of a whole bunch of other students.
Going to office hours that the teachers provide, getting that extra help makes such a big difference. And I think especially in this year, it's been really helpful getting to form like a connection with my teachers.
Work is more self-paced and I'm allowed to really choose one environment I work in rather than being stuck in a classroom setting.
I do mostly listen to music and do work on paper and pen. When I mostly do need help, I mostly raise my hand. And when I know the stuff, it's really easy.
I need more support in math and that's pretty much it.
For me, I've been to multiple different schools, cities, and that's been really a pain in the butt to really deal with.
Maintaining strong communication with my teachers because I can't really go in and see them in person. It all has to be done over email and Zoom.
Being at home, it's very easy for me to get distracted, whether it be my siblings are talking to me or I'm getting distracted looking at my phone or I'm looking like stuff up online. And it's, it's definitely really, really hard to focus, no matter like how hard I try.
Not understanding why I'm doing the work and not having enough time to do it.
At first was not having enough context to the work that was given to me.
I think it's really useful in communicating with your teachers when you need help and speaking up and creating that communication from the start of when you begin that new class. Because if you don't feel comfortable, you might be a little bit anxious in reaching out for help. And teachers are there to support you and help you. So I think it's really good in reaching out when you need help.
So I believe we can all kind of hear the impact of the pandemic and some of the quotes that were shared from our students. But at the same time, we can hear themes that apply beyond the pandemic. If you have distractions at home, if you're not able to access and connect with your teachers, your comfort level in asking for help in the first place, whether it's with your teachers or in front of your peers. These are all things that took on new expressions in distance learning, but are true pre-pandemic and will be true post-pandemic. So it's, it's these nuggets that we want to continue to learn from and respond to as we continue to move forward. One last perspective on things, and that is from our families with Maria Larios Horton.
Thank you, Ms. Carrie. Good afternoon, President Ford, Board Members, and Superintendent Mardanada. I'd like to share with you some insights and input we have received from our families over the course of actually several years and through various feedback and input opportunities, most recently, about how they experienced the reporting and grading process for their students. Our families have expressed that they lack understanding of the learning expectations for their students in any given grade level. In other words, the parent of a third grader may not fully understand what their student is expected to know and be able to do by the end of third grade. And then what guideposts along the way help signal whether their student is reaching those expectations. As a result, when reports of student progress and grade level standards mastery are shared, families are not able to fully grasp the degree to which their students are or are not meeting grade level expectations. This gap in understanding is further exacerbated for families who are not familiar with the U.S. educational system. This experience is more acute, of course, for families who have students with IEPs and are challenged with understanding how IEP goals match up with grade level expectations and how the support provided to students will help them achieve those goals. Next slide, please. When we hone in on the experiences of families with students who are emergent multilingual learners, we hear from them that they are unaware that explicit language development and support must be afforded to their students. In many cases, they may or may not know that their students must receive designated and integrated English language development. And this information would help them understand so much more about whether their students are experiencing challenges despite the specialized instruction and be able to ask and advocate for their students if they are not receiving that instruction. Secondly, we are hearing from families that their students' first language and the development of English as an additional language is not considered when grading students or reporting on their progress. This tends to lead to reporting student progress in terms that do not reflect the potential students who are multilingual have. One positive shift brought on by our Emergent Multilingual Reclassification Committee, a committee composed of students, or I'm sorry, parents, teachers and administrators, recognized that the reclassification of emergent multilingual learners in our district was being affected by the students' D and F grades in English. Once this data was analyzed, our committee recognized that often a student's D and F grade was not truly reflecting a student's proficiency in English, but rather other issues related to non-academic factors. As such, our committee agreed that a student with a D or F could indeed reclassify upon further review by site administrators and English teachers. And so our educators have been ready partners in making this significant shift, which has had far-reaching impact. I now turn this over to Ms. Carey for some teacher perspectives on this matter.
So you've heard from our clientele, our families and our students. But our teachers are our practitioners and it's their classrooms where the rubber meets the road. Ms. Ford, President Ford already referenced our January board meetings in which we were looking at the end of the first semester for secondary schools and thinking about the second semester on the horizon and how to mitigate the exacerbating the the negative effects of the pandemic and how it exacerbated the inherent inequities in traditional grading. And as a result, we got to have a glimpse into the into the minds and thoughts of our teachers. And really, we learned that there was a wide range of experiences and opinions about grading, but it made it all the more noteworthy that a strong majority at that time told us they favored the substituting of an F grade with a no-credit grade. Both grades don't confer credit to a student, but one is punitive with a GPA in a way that is not true for the no-credit. An F is punitive to a GPA in a way that a no-credit is not. And so it was just something we really appreciated to see that that the vast majority of educators and secondary system could distinguish that and understand there was no reason to unnecessarily punish students, in this case particularly, for for factors beyond their control. A healthy majority were indicated a lot of support for exploring a shift to a four-point grading scale in lieu of the traditional one-hundred-point grading scale. At this time or in the January when we asked some of the deeper points around grading scales and other kinds of grading practices, including eliminating the D grade altogether or eliminating zeros and replacing with fifties, those were practices that at that time in January, we did not have a majority of secondary certificated staff in support of those kinds of shifts in practice or policy. But what came out most loudly and most clearly, and you can see here that we had an eighty-six percent response rate. So that's four hundred and thirty-six teachers and over half opted to write comments, which was optional. And some of them were quite extensive. And what I really want to highlight is that there was a strong, nearly universal desire for more opportunities to talk about our understanding of the unintended harm related to our traditional grading practices and to learn from experts and from one another on how and which grading practices to shift. So that's what I want to really highlight. On the next slide, I just have some excerpts that represent some of the comments we received from teachers, both in our survey but also in our teachers advisory council. And I'll read just just the one aloud. What is our purpose in assigning grades? Is it to show learning? Is it to show the student finish the course? Is it to boost GPAs for college entrance or to punish students who don't perform? Teacher goes on to say, no matter how I look at it, traditional grades seem to go against what we need for real student-centered learning. And I thought that did such a good job, speaking not only to the the myriad of issues that are tied up with grading, but also this yearning that I want to represent that I hear from our teachers of wanting to ensure that we have meaningful, authentic, and as the teacher says, real student-centered learning. Which is a great weight and moment to hand off to Mark again, who's going to talk to us a little bit more about the history and impact of traditional grading practices so we can better understand that. I want to just say as we do that handoff that a lot of folks have benefited from the way the traditional grading system is set up. And so it can be hard to hear about the fact that that can do unintended harm, especially, you know, disproportionately and inequitably. So thank you, Mark, for helping us to learn more about that.
Absolutely. And thank you for, I mean, I know I'm saying thank you. I really enjoyed hearing all the data and bits and pieces, all the work that y'all are doing and collecting. And yeah, absolutely. I love that question of, you know, what's the purpose of grading? Which, you know, teased me up quite well for talking a bit about how do we actually get to using the system that we're using? So let us talk about how we actually got to using the system of grading, right? How do we come to the space and how does it actually impact teaching and learning? Well, before I do that, actually, let's 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 recognize at least that in education, we've made great leaps. We've made a lot of strides and and a lot of advancements in education, right? On the left are desks that are literally nailed to the floor because we believed that students would run amok if they weren't nailed to the floor. Right? And to the right is more more of what we would hope our classrooms look like, a lot more collaboration. Advancement in how students receive information, right? Especially now when we are in kind of virtual learning and these bits and pieces. And even things like how we teach and and where we are standing in the classroom in our boards, right? Got a version of Sage on the stage on the left and and more version of a more collaborative learning atmosphere up front. But the thing that hasn't changed actually is our grading and our report cards, right? On the left is a report card from nineteen eighteen and on the right is a report card from two thousand and twelve. And what you can see is that it's subject, subject, subject down the left and letter grade, letter grade, letter grade on the right, right? So we haven't made these great advancements. So let's actually talk about how we got to using this system. So if you don't mind, just me getting on my little bitty history soapbox here. The this whole bit starts with the Industrial Revolution. And so we got late nineteenth, earliest twentieth century. America's actually behind in the industrial revolution, so we're in the trying to catch up with everybody else mode. And a lot of things are happening in America, right? Industry becomes one of the most influential things in in America, right? We have a lot of great educational thinkers actually at this time period who are pushing for compulsory school for everybody to be educated because they want to help maximize student potential. Now, I say everybody, but please understand when I say everybody, when I'm talking about everybody. Students who looked a little bit like me weren't in that everybody category quite yet, right? And then there's a huge amount of migration and immigration to America for a lot of different reasons, a lot having to do with the kind of industry boom, right? Now, during this time period, what's also getting popular is this idea of natural intelligence, right? And we know how damaging that is in this idea that we could actually test a human for their intelligence. And if we tested humans for their intelligence, we could actually graph the intelligence and it landed nicely neatly on a bell curve, meaning that there was a fixed amount of intelligence in a human and within the kind of human population, right? And also what we have is this idea that there's a rise in popularity of this idea of behaviorism, right? That the the idea that any animal, including humans, the behavior is a result of external stimuli, responses and reinforcements, right? Now, how does this actually affect our institutions and schools? Well, because productivity and efficiency become so hugely important, right? And because factory owners and industry and people who who were booming in the industry had so much push, what ends up happening is they actually need more workers. So what we do is, or not we, but what they do is they start pressuring schools, school boards, and and really just public institutions to prepare schools or to have schools prepare students to become future employees, right? And so they're able to persuade education, the institutions of education, to fold in the characteristics of industry, right? The idea of specialization, so maybe you silo classes in the very specific roles that you take, the the ability to follow a chain of command, right? Being able to do it, to follow a timed routine. And this idea of being efficient and being able to sort things is like baked all into public institutions in our schools, right? Now, if you go back and we we talk about behaviorism, this actually fits perfectly because now it tells people that with the right combination of reinforcements and consequences that any student could learn to act in desired ways, right? So by using, by by having that happen and then using a heavy amount of testing, we could actually sort students into the right tracks. And the reason why they wanted to sort students into the right tracks is because they were trying not to waste any school resources. Now, hopefully that makes you feel uncomfortable because now we're talking about not wasting resources on a student, right? But they're just trying to be efficient. And so I'm going to stop here and just kind of say that now what's happened is we've actually, the goal of capitalism and pushing this idea of industry and things like that, actually, it 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 pushes out the goal of us trying to educate students and have them reach their fullest potential, right? So just to recap, some carryovers in our traditional grading system that that are carried over from this time period. One, that schools are, schools are sorting mechanisms and grading should actually help us efficiently sort our students, right? That academic performance actually, excuse me, academic performance occurs nicely neatly on a bell curve, meaning that there's only a certain amount of smarts and that we could actually test for it. And that in order to get students to behave the way that we want them to, extrinsic motivation or something like a grade, right, is the most effective way to get students to do that. And we no longer believe these ideas, right? And we actually actively push against these ideas in our schools and classrooms. So it's time to kind of update what we're doing, reexamine our traditional grading practices, dismantle the system and really start shifting our cultures. So with that, I'm going to pass it over to Joe to talk a little bit about how our grading system actually constrains some of the communication that teaching and learning constraints, communication and does a lot of really negative things for how we want to describe our students' behaviors and 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 skills, excuse me.
And I'll just add a couple of other points. One is that prior to the Industrial Revolution, we had a very dispersed population and and students were taught in one-room schoolhouses, right? We'd have the same teacher over multiple years and teachers would give narrative reports about each of their students or even verbal ones to the caregivers. And in the Industrial Revolution, now that we have these large factory-model schools or at least schools that were designed to educate large number of students at the same time, we couldn't have teachers who would use narrative reporting. It was too clunky and inefficient. So what we created was the letter system, A, B, C, D, we used to have an E actually, and F. And it would enable us to easily describe where students were and therefore, as Mark said, facilitate the sorting of students into different academic tracks. And therefore, whether it be post-secondary or they would go work on the factory line. And we as educators don't think that schools should be in the business of sorting students. We think students should have as many choices as possible and let them decide what they want to do with their lives. And we no longer believe in a fixed intelligence that occurs on a bell curve. Carol Dweck and others have talked about how malleable intelligence is. And we've also known since the seventies that extrinsic motivation is a terrible way to motivate, particularly when we're trying to build more creative thinking and higher performance. And intrinsic motivation is far superior. But these three big ideas, because they were in the air during the time that the schools, these the twentieth-century schools were constructed and woven into grading systems, actually has this detrimental impact because we've moved so much farther ahead in the way we think about teaching and learning. But it's still the same grading practices. And so I want to share a couple of ways in which these historical practices and the continued use of them actually undermine a lot of our work, particularly for our most vulnerable students. And they do it without us even realizing it. So I'll go through a couple of examples. So the first is that there is a commodity of grading and we're the vendors of this commodity. So I have a third grader at home. And when he was in kindergarten, I visited his classroom and I, you know, helped as a volunteer. And when I walked in, the teacher was doing activity with a clear plastic tray and an earthworm on it, a live earthworm. And every pair of students had their own tray and their own earthworm. And every student had their own piece of paper and they were supposed to draw the earthworm, right? Integrating fine motor skills and observation and science and and art and things like that. And no student raised their hand and said, how many points do I get? Students were just there and learning and enjoying the curiosity and enjoy of learning new things. Somewhere around third grade, my student is, my child is starting to experience this, fourth grade, students start introducing points. And it starts in a very small way, like you get three points for finishing these questions. And if you are late, you lose a point. And it comes into full blossom in middle school where you lose five points if it's late. And if you come on time, you get points and there's extra credit points. And if you work well in a group, you get points. And every time you raise your hand, you get points. And in high school, it continues. And students therefore are taught that, oh, I get it. School isn't about learning. The school is about accumulating as many points as possible in whatever way I can capture them. And students start figuring this out, like, oh, I need to haggle for points and I got to get points from over here and I better not lose points here. And the whole language and vocabulary of learning is now reduced to points. And students will say, I'm, you know, I'm two points away from an A. Or they have apps probably in your district where students calculate. If I get an eighty-six on this next test, I'll have this percentage, so I got to get at least this. And they're monitoring their their grades like the stock market. And teachers might see grades kind of flagging, so they introduce extra credit. And teachers are like the Fed, they just create more points in the economy whenever they want. And then we complain that students are consumed with points and nobody's talking about learning. And it's because we taught them that that's what school is because that's what extrinsic motivation taught us. Is that if we want students to do things, we offer them points. The second way that our inherited system actually undermines our work is that it constrains what we want to say and actually misleads our students and those who make decisions about them. So, you know, when a teacher is sitting down for a caregiver conference or they're about to press submit on their grade book, teachers have a whole lot of information about their students, about each of them, where they struggled, who they work well with, what what makes them get upset and frustrated, what motivates them, which skills they got and which ones they didn't. And they get to give that. They have to somehow collapse all of this diverse information into a tiny little container. And what happens is, is that every teacher starts to think about, well, how do I put all of this information into this tiny little bucket? And teachers start including all kinds of stuff, right? They want to include like, did my student come on time? And did the student complete, do well on their test? And how did they do on their homework? And how did they do on their extra credit and their participation and effort? And participation and effort are highly susceptible to bias and are usually a projection of what that teacher looks like when they are participating or or learning actively. And then they compare their students to that archetype, either for them individually or them culturally. But that's a whole nother issue that we can talk about at another time. They're collapsing all this into a single space. And so what happens then is that teachers start trying different strategies, like, well, I'll drop the lowest grade or I'll look at whether a student kind of grew over the time. Or maybe I'll drop the lowest assignment. Or maybe if they do all their homework, I'll excuse a quiz, all these different kinds of things. And what's happening is that every teacher is trying to make their own tweaks to this dysfunctional system. And what's happening is that every teacher is trying to make their own tweaks to this dysfunctional system. And they're all doing it idiosyncratically and based on personal beliefs and with our own subjectivity and biases. But we're always doing it with professional judgment and best intent. No teacher is saying, I don't care what grades the kids get, whatever. No, they're trying to invest their every grade with meaning and value about what's important in this classroom and what learning should be looking like and what the professional world expects and what kind of a community we're trying to create and how to motivate. It's just every teacher is doing it in a different way. When we work with schools, one of the first things we do is we give surveys to teachers. And there's a pair of questions that I'm sharing with you. This is not from your district, but it's we, it's an example of what happens at every place we work. And the pair of questions are, how, how much do you agree that your grades accurately reflect the students' preparation for their next year in that subject, right? So I teach English nine. How am I, is my grading accurately reflecting their preparation for English ten? And as you might expect, teachers are pretty confident that their grades accurately reflect the student's level of readiness for the next year. We also ask teachers, how accurate are the incoming students' grades in their accuracy in their, in their reflecting the student's level of preparation for your class? So in other words, if I teach English ten, how accurate are the grades from the ninth grade English teacher? And there is a lot of disagreement with that. So in other words, my grade, every teacher is saying my grading is accurate, but I don't know about my colleagues. And that's what we would expect to happen because there hasn't been any training and there's been rarely every ever a sort of dedicated space and support around teachers learning this. And so what happens is the grades become variable so that you could have a student with identical performance in two different teachers' classrooms. And because they have different grading systems, they would get different grades. And the students know this is happening. This is from a ninth grader. Every teacher has their own way of grading, which I think is confusing to the students. When you first change classes, you don't know how that teacher is going to grade the homework. So you don't really know how to do it as far as making sure all your answers are right. Because some teachers, they don't grade the homework at all. They just look through it and, oh, you tried a hundred percent. And other teachers are, no, you have to get this answer exactly right on the homework or you're not getting the points. It's really confusing to me because I don't know how it's going, you don't know how it's going to be. My sister's a teacher, so I try and talk to her about this kind of stuff all the time and she's usually confused by it a lot, too. And she's twenty-eight, which I think is just wonderful to hear a ninth grader say that. I'll give you one other sort of twist on this same dynamic. So I'm going to show you profiles of three students. And just in your head, I want you to think about which one or ones you would assign a B to for their performance. I'll give you a second to look at it. So what may be going on in your head is like, well, both this one and this one should get a B. Or all three could get Bs, or none of them could get Bs. What happens is that all these students are potentially profiles of B, of students who would get a B. And so while in the first example, you could have one student with this, with two different teachers, and even though the student has the same performance because the teachers have different grading practices, the student, the student gets different grades. This is the reverse. This is where three students are sitting next to each other in the same classroom, getting identical grades, but they're totally different from each other. And what happens is because there is so much variability and so this dysfunctional system is so constraining, what's happening is that we're getting unreliable and inaccurate information about where students are in their performance. If you think about Maurice, Maurice was the first student there who is weak on the content, but just an angel of a kid. And you just love him to death because he always, he does everything you ask. And we think Maurice is fine because he's getting a B. He's not showing up on any lists of of concerns. Nobody knows there's a problem. He goes to the next grade level or to college or from middle school to high school and gets crushed by the content and has no idea why. And Damien, it's the reverse problem. Damien knows that, he was the third kid who had a very strong understanding of the standards, came to school or tended to have a negative attitude, was late by a day or two and he handed in homework. He knows the content and he looks around the room and he says, oh, I guess school is just a bunch of games. I just have to, I just have to do what the teacher says and that's how you, that's how you do school. Well, I don't want to do school. And what happens is we're having the wrong kids potentially eligible to play on the soccer field and the wrong kids who are being retained and the wrong kids who are not getting redesignated. And the, the, you know, we've just not using valid and reliable information. I know this is a big downer, but I got to give you one more. And that's the harm to students, right? We know that adolescents, one of the big jobs of adolescents is identity construction. Who am I? And there are a few more formalized ways that students learn who they are than by the grades that their teachers give them. And when we work with schools, students don't say, oh, I really struggle in math. They say, I'm a D student in math, right? They describe themselves by the grades that their teachers have given them and that they have received. And it can only add to the stress that they feel when they're, and and the cognitive load. And this was even referenced with the caregiver survey, where not only do students have to learn their content and excel in their, in understanding the content of each course, but they have to also navigate every teacher's individual grading system that can be more or less transparent and clear and explainable. And it just weakens the relationships that they can potentially have with the grownups in the schools where they are. This is a high school student. In my life, the thing that causes me the most stress is the amount that teaching revolves around points and grades. And teachers would say the same thing. And again, this is a big downer and I so appreciate you sitting through this. The good news is we're going to have a chance to learn what could be better. And you're going to hear from some stories of teachers in just a minute in your own district who have started pursuing this work. But I want to give a little bit of space. So we stopped talking and give you a chance to talk a little bit about just what's coming up for you and what resonated or what questions or emotions are coming up for you. So if it's all right, I'd like to give you about thirty seconds or so to just have some thinking time and then invite any of the board members to just share how they're feeling and what they're, what they're thinking. So I'll give you about thirty minutes to get some thoughts together. Thirty seconds, sorry, thirty seconds. All right. So we'll just open it up. Who would like to share first?
Thank you. Well, I'm thinking about Maurice, who doesn't have a strong mastery of the subject matter, but it's a very nice kid. Everybody likes him or her. And he might even end up with a high GPA, but it's not prepared for the world. It's actually a disservice. He or she is at a disadvantage because he cannot compete for the jobs or even get in a university. And if he, by any means, if he got in, he would not be successful.
Thank you. Who's next?
I'm sorry. Very much resonates with me this out, outmoded model. I mean, you, you know, you put the, the report card up there from decades ago. And I just wondered, you know, with technology, are there, are there schools that are doing, what are the best practices? Or or maybe you can speak to that at a later point in this presentation. But I'd love to learn where innovation is happening. Thank you.
Yes, for me, it's also the culture of the students, you know, and or the family. The dignity issue when there's other things going on at home that are taken away from their focus on the school. And also there, you know, the self-concept, the stressors. I'm certainly familiar with students that have to work full time just to support their family and and their learning in school. It's just sometimes it doesn't translate into a grade in that concern.
Oh, well, I could talk about grading all along. I, I think, as Mark said, grading is personal. But if you've gone to school, you have stories about grades. But if you've been a teacher, you have millions stories about grading. And I think in fifteen years as a teacher, I never once received any kind of professional development about how to grade. And as a result, I created these really cumbersome kind of ways of grading kids. I think it was basically a way to confuse everyone and give kids the grades that I wanted them to have. With to, to refer back to what Joe said. But I also, I remember a turning point really in my teaching career was when two really brilliant girls came up to me and one had a paper, was an English teacher. One had a paper that said A minus and the other said B plus. And they came up to me and they said, Ms. Ford, what is the difference between an A minus and a B plus? And I had no answer.
Thank you. Have we heard from everybody, all them?
Yes.
Oh, great. Yeah, and all, every teacher could tell you their own stories and like what President Ford was saying, many teachers at the end of a term will do what I call affectionately the end of term fudging, which is not like this gift of having yourself a treat when you're all done, but it's actually looking at your grade book and saying, oh, this student has a B plus. They have an eighty-nine point four. And the grade book is telling me it's an, it's a B plus, but I know this student should have an A. They should have an A minus, but the numbers say this. So I'm going to go back and I'm going to change this three to a nine. Let's just see what happens. Oh, look, it made it, so it was an eighty-nine point five, which rounds up to an A minus, great. And so teachers are even like having to, with graduate degrees, are outfoxing spreadsheets to have the grade represent their best professional judgment about a student's level of mastery of their course content. And we can do so much better, but have never been equipped or had the opportunity as teachers to be able to to do better. So I appreciate the sort of, well, I appreciate that the board is really grappling with this. And all these, like, the downer that you might be feeling is, could be just low blood sugar at the end of an evening, but it's real. And I think it really sets the stage and provides this engine to get us to be compelled to to want to tackle this and to do something differently. It is urgent that we do this and well overdue. So I will actually pass it back to Sean for a minute, who's going to, we're going to hear from some teachers like within your district. And then Mark and I will come back and talk to you and give you some concrete examples additionally about equitable grading and talk about the ways that districts have have taken this on. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Thank you, board members. It's a perfect setup for what we're going to hear next, which is from our teachers who are really representative of many teachers. So you're going to hear from three, but many teachers of, as we've seen, you know, recognize there's a problem, recognize the heaviness and the downer of of coming to see what's wrong with traditional grading and need what what board member Caps was saying. So what are, what what are some of the the things that we can do differently in my individual classroom, even as we work on systemic change? And with that, we're going to begin with Dr. Craig Schneider, who's going to give us a perspective from from the elementary vantage point.
Thank you. Thank you, board members. Sorry about the muting. I want to give a, some background on my work here in elementary. I am a former high school math teacher and a teacher educator for the past twenty-five years. Now I'm working in elementary mathematics with Santa Barbara Unified. And I want to describe how learning is messy. It takes time, takes patience and trust in the process. Learning is messy, even in a discipline like mathematics. We've heard a lot about objectivity. And a lot of people think mathematics is a subject where it's very objective. So let's talk a little bit about that. Learning deeply for the long haul and aiming towards understanding influency, there's this cycle of that that happens for kids. The first part of the cycle is exploring and playing and experimenting. That's what learning looks like. It's messy. But then we go to this deep dive where we research and we use tools to to investigate. And then we apply and synthesize what we've learned. And so that's a messy cycle and all that is happening at the same time while we're also utilizing language to communicate our thinking. And that's what makes learning messy for kids and for teachers to know what's happening for kids' learning. So mathematics is often considered a universal language. It's a, it's a, it's an experience. It's a discipline that is absent of any kind of language demands, like reading, writing, speaking and listening. And that misconception couldn't be farther from the truth. I think that comes from this sort of focus on the symbols of math, like the plus symbol and the division fraction bar. But it really isn't true. The language demands in mathematics are high. They are especially high in today's 21st century math classrooms that are focused. If you look at that diagram, that Venn diagram on the far right of my slide, you'll see how math and language are overlapped. And all those student actions that we want and see and facilitate as teachers in a math classroom is focused on reasoning and communication. That's what happens in a 21st first century math classroom, probably different than the math classroom you experienced, certainly different than the one I experienced as a student. And so what we want to make sure is that the language demands are supported in our instruction and then supported also in our assessment. If you take a look at the bottom right, you'll see some mathematical representation there of a diagram of a picture of dots where students investigated those dots, made sense of how many there were and how students counted them. And you can see the various ways students collaborated to share their thinking, to see someone else's perspective. And that's what 21st century math classrooms look like with math and language overlapping. If you look at the far left, the lower left, you'll see TKers from Cleveland Elementary School working with partners to problem solve and to count. And so that's what happens in collaborative conversations. We hear each other's ideas and try to make sense of their reasoning to gain multiple perspectives. All of this is happening every day in a math class for every single student. The language in math are integrated and overlapping. Seems very different for us in a, from our traditional sense of what a math classroom looks like. This is especially demanding on our EMLs who have additional demands besides all the ones I just described. So as a teacher, it is not easy to assess or report on the individual student learning that is happening in this messy cycle. And so, and especially in these language-rich realities of our, of our math classrooms. So while it's not easy, our assessment and reporting tools might, you know, run the risk of oversimplifying learning goals and sort of reducing down what is important to get into that little box as was described by by Mark and Joe. And so to that end, what I want to suggest, and with the support of our new math framework that is in a revision process right next through this year, is that with professional learning, we can get some good initial steps towards a shift in our grading practices that take into account the interdependency of language and mathematics, or any discipline for that matter, when we are assessing student learning and have multiple ways for students to demonstrate mastery. And with that, I want to turn it over to our next teacher.
Thank you, Dr. Schneider. Next, we have Jan Ferrer from Galita Valley Junior High School. Jan?
Thank you, Assistant Superintendent Carey. Good evening, Board President Ford, Board members, District Leaders, Mr. Feldman and Mr. Botswell. When I reflected on this topic of grading, I realized that I used to follow traditional grading practices without pausing to question their impact on students' identities and their attitudes toward learning. Students earned an A, B, C, D or F on an assignment and we moved forward. Students were permitted to resubmit assignments, but this opportunity was not always explicit. Now I utilize mastery grading practices because these practices encourage students to be lifelong learners, to understand that learning and growth, rather than singular grades themselves, are what matter. From week one in our class, students become familiar with the four-point scale. They learn that a three is the goal and that anything below a three warrants invitations for learning support and multiple opportunities until those skills have been attained. They learn that a four means going above and beyond, pushing past the grade level skill requirements into deeper learning applications. The results have been that, one, students learn that their present skill levels are not fixed. The results have been that, one, students learn that their present skill levels are not fixed. There are always opportunities for improvement. Two, it is clear to students, families and myself where students are in their learning and what they can do to improve. And three, all students have the opportunity to use scaffolds to help them reach learning targets and to apply their learning at a higher level. Mastery grading allows for students to push beyond grade level standards. Next image, please. So this is an example of how a student went beyond grade level skill requirements in our argument writing unit by adding several thinking challenges to her essay. For one, she chose to explore a topic, empathy, that she was unfamiliar with. Second, she chose to write her essay from the opposite viewpoint of what she actually believed. And third, next image, please. She translated her essay into an infographic to give her audience a visual representation of her major points while she delivered her speech. In her end of unit reflection, next image, please. She considers the process and outcome of the choices she made throughout the unit. And next, I believe we have the opportunity to hear from a high school colleague.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for the introduction and thank you, board members and guests, for taking this time to learn and listen about these necessary shifts. I know there's a lot on the screen right now. I'll go through each piece for you. But I want to take some time to talk about the small shifts that I've made in my instruction and planning. So I used to measure students' learning through traditional one-size-fits-all kind of assignments and assessments. Every learner reads a book, every learner writes an essay about that same book at the same time with the same deadline. And these assignments often required skills and environments and schedules that many of my students did not have or did not have yet. And while my intent was to provide a guaranteed curriculum, to increase alignment with my colleagues and to ensure that all students had a rigorous learning experience, I was truly never able to see or track which skills each student had learned or mastered. So now I'm taking some small steps to aim and understand students' learning by measuring their level of content mastery through specific transparent learning targets. Because I believe that students need to truly understand what's expected in each assignment and I need to truly understand where to provide appropriate support. If we take a look at the visual on the screen, you'll see on the left side a snippet of some of the work we're doing in one of my classes. I've used other methods, but for this English ten course, you'll see eight learning targets. And this list is not exhaustive. And what we call learning targets doesn't really matter right now. It could be learning targets or skills or competencies, depending on your system. But the idea here is that there's a specific set of skills that we're focusing on in class, depending on student need. And so one of my recent shifts has been to give the students these learning targets. And then on the right side, you'll see some learning tasks. So some students can independently read or write a personal narrative or evaluate online sources to prove that they have met that learning target. So there's some choice there available to them. And one method I've used to attempt to track the student progress and to provide a final grade is to require evidence of those targets at a specific proficiency level. So you'll see on the bottom, it's kind of fuzzy, but there's a rubric there that says students have to receive a score of a two or a three on four or five or ultimately eight learning targets to show that they have mastered a skill. And what this does is it sort of empowers me to provide the support to get them to the next level. It shows me what specific skills they need to focus on, rather than just the idea that they can't write a certain type of essay. We can focus on the skill that they need to develop that essay. It provides me with the opportunity to really differentiate and personalize my instruction. My focus on the evidence of student learning, rather than the points that they did or did not receive, has helped me provide specific feedback and instruction to individual students so they can meet their various learning goals. And now my student's final grade is a better representation of what skills they've developed and not just an average of points that they've earned from assignments. From my experience, students seem to understand and appreciate the need to provide evidence of a target because they have an opportunity to understand what skills they need to work on. And they have a language that helps them confidently describe their needs and goals. And they also see revision and iteration as a necessary part of their learning process. I recognize that this is just one movement towards a greater shift towards equitable grading practices, but I do feel like it's a step in the right direction. Thank you.
Thanks so much to the three teachers who just spoke to us and shared with us their perspectives and their experiences. I think we heard some of the features that help us shift to more equitable practices. But I'm going to hand it back over to Joan now, who is going to give us a very broad framework for thinking about those shifts.
Thank you, and that was awesome. It was great to hear from all three teachers about the different things they're trying in very concrete ways with the artifacts and everything. That was, that was wonderful. And just a shout out to all of you for having this conversation in this way. In so many places where we work, it starts with like some teachers asking for it or maybe a principal. And you're really thinking about how the system can all have this conversation in its own, in different ways, all kind of along the same path. It's really unique. And so it's, I'm just so thankful to give a little bit of support in our way. So the framework for equitable grading that we use has three pillars. The first is that grades accurately reflect a student's academic performance, that grades are bias resistant, so they counteract institutional biases and prevent implicit biases from infecting the grade. And that grades are motivational, that they build students' intrinsic motivation and sense of efficacy. And there is a whole lot baked into this. And the only reason I'm reading the slide word for word is because every word is carefully chosen. And as Mark said at the beginning, this is not a chance to have everyone understand all the elements and nuances, but it's a framework that we constantly use. And Mark is going to show you how we apply that to a particular equitable grading practice.
And I just want to take the quick moment to just say, just a reminder, we're asking to dismantle systems and shift culture. And today is in, you know, I was joking with Joe, like today's not even an introduction. It's like an E, it's like the beginning part of an introduction to this work that takes a lot of time and effort and really digging into each one of these spaces. So what we're going to do right now is look at a common grading policy that we all pretty much know and we'll explain a little bit. But looking at that common grading policy through the three pillars, right? So the common grading policy that we're actually going to look at is averaging performance over time. Now, we all know what that kind of looks like, right? You you get a student's performance over a certain amount of time and you average all those scores together and you, it like outputs another score, right? But let's see where this kind of, let's, let's, like I said, look through these through the three pillars. So if we were to look through the three pillars and we wanted to talk about whether or not this is an accurate reflection of a student's academic performance, let's pretend that we have a student and they're doing a unit, let's say it's five, five units of, five units. And it's over, we're doing a persuasive essay unit, right? And the goal is to see if this student can actually write a persuasive essay, right? An A level or master the persuasive essay. And so over the course of the the student's performance, they don't do so well at the beginning, but they learn over time. By the end of the course, they actually are able to, or excuse me, at the end of the unit, they're actually able to write an A level for master writing a persuasive essay. My question you, or if we just average over time, what we've done now is we've taken all of that learning and we've, we've averaged it together. And what ends up happening is we come out with a score somewhere in the middle. But I'm asking you the question of if the goal of being able, the goal of the unit is for the student to be, come out at the end and write an A level essay, does the student do that by the end of the term? And in this kind of example, absolutely. So the most accurate reflection of that student's academic performance, if we're speaking about whether or not this student can write an A level essay, is yes, that student has written that essay, right? So a more equitable grading practice, rather than averaging over time, is actually including only the most recent performance. So I'm saying that knowing, I mean, I know your brain is going like, wait a minute, stop. And like I said, this is an intro. We're in the business right now of opening loops because we want you to have these questions and really chew on some of these things. Now, moving on to our second pillar, which is that we want our grades to be bias resistant. And we're actually going to hone in a little bit on this institutional bias. But we want to make sure that these biases don't infect our grades. So before we do that, let's talk a little bit about an institutional bias, which is when the procedures and practices of institutions operate in ways that result in certain groups being advantaged and favored and others being disadvantaged or devalued. So what we're talking about here is we're actually not talking about the individual actors, right? We're not talking about a person or a thing. What we're actually talking about is the systems and structures that are built into, baked into our systems, you know, especially our traditional grading system, that are actually doing these things for our students, right? So what are the institutional biases embedded in in averaging performance over time? Well, you know, I talked about one student who kind of had that trajectory of started off low and and you saw their learning in your class. But what if we talk about another student who, before getting to your class, before getting to your class and learning how to write a persuasive essay, they actually had the money or the ride or the ability to go to a summer writing camp and were, and learned how to write a persuasive essay over the summer, right? And they show up into your class and they're just rocking it, A's all the way across the board, right? But what you're not seeing is that student's learning, right? What instead you're doing is you're folding in that student's resources, extra resources and privileges before they even got to your class into their grade, right? And if we look back at the student who entered your class and didn't do so well at the beginning and we move the timeline back a little bit, I heard somebody say, some of your students are taking care of family members. Maybe they are, have a job over the summer, these sorts of things, or don't have the same resources. Maybe they just don't even have a ride to get to that summer camp. They don't have the same resources. And so now what we've done is we've taken that student who's learning in our class, we're taking their learning and folding it in and then giving them a grade that doesn't represent whether or not they can actually perform the task at hand, which is writing a persuasive essay. So you can see how now all of a sudden that institutional bias can really infect our grades and not give us accurate information. So you see what I did there, biased and accurate. And that, and what we want to do now also is look at this motivational piece, right? Okay, I just told you this beautiful story of one student coming in and learning in your class and scoring low at the beginning. Now, we all know what tends to happen when a student scores low at the beginning. They know the math, right? They get ding, they get that D and that F at the beginning. They know that if you average them over time, no matter how hard they work, even if they show you that they can write an A level essay, guess what? It's not going to matter because you're going to average it all together and they're not going to have that representation. So what do they do? They decide to do something else. They're going to use their time elsewhere. I'm not going to spin my wheels here and spend my time here doing this thing. Instead, what I'm going to do is I'm going to choose, I'm going to choose another route of something that actually fills me up, right? Now, you know, Joe and I, you know, we're talking and things like that. But there, there are some incredible educational researchers out there who have been writing about this for quite some time. One of my favorites is Geneva Gay. She says, each failure by a student confirms what they already know about the task that they can't do it. And by the way, if you haven't checked out Geneva Gay, go, go check her out. She's, she's pretty dope. And then we have Dr. Thomas Gusky, who brings up the point that contrary to popular belief, right? Giving a low grade to actually teach a student a lesson or to motivate them actually doesn't work because instead of promoting greater effort, low grades more often cause students to withdraw from learning, right? And I just want to hammer this home. There is zero research out there, zero, nada, that shows that giving low grades will motivate a student to do better. I'll say it again for the people in the back. There's zero research out there that says giving a low grade motivates a student to do better. Instead, there's plenty of research that shows that low grades actually demotivate our students, right? And then what we can do now at this point is we can, we can talk about our, the mistakes that we say that we want them to make in class. Now, I actually want to change this language a little bit because I think we say like mistakes are learning, or mistakes are good. And really what we're actually saying is learning is good. Forming, forming an idea, figuring things out, that is good. It's not a mistake if they're learning, right? But we understand that those are the steps that are necessary for our students to actually learn, right? And then the problem is, we say those things in class, but our traditional grading practices, they actually contradict that because we're going to ding you if you make a mistake in our class. We're going to take that learning and tell you it's a mistake, right? And that's definitely not what we want to be saying, right? We can, we then stop using things like growth mindset and these bits and pieces as just talking points. And we actually back it up with our actual grading practices if we shift our practices. So, you know, we love getting kind of a teacher and student voice in the room. So here's two quotes from two, from two teachers. One kid started late in class with scoring low and playing catch-up. For the first time, I was giving him hope that he could still pass. And there's plenty of research out there that attaches hope and and shows the connection between hope and motivation. So if we are making our students feel hopeless, I mean, I know that's not what we're trying to do. And the problem is that our traditional grading practices actually can do that to our students. So I'm going to pass it back over to Joe to talk to, to talk a bit about some other aspects of of how we want to get rid of this, this traditional system that's really harming our students.
Thanks. And when we, and and Mark, I'm going to just make his excuse for him. He actually has to go to, and his own school is having a board meeting, so he's going to run. But thank you, Mark.
Thank you so much for the time, everybody. See you soon, hopefully.
And when we look at more recent performance, teachers will tell us that it actually motivates students more, knowing that if they make mistakes early, they can overcome those and have later performance override earlier performance because that's what the grade should represent. It should be more accurate, it should be more bias resistant, and it therefore becomes more motivational. So I want to lastly share a little bit about what we've learned as we've worked with a lot of different districts about how they approach this work. One of the things that we've heard is a lot of people start asking us, well, oh, my gosh, like there's a pandemic. We better tackle grading. How do we grade during a pandemic? And the answer is equitably, that you, the same considerations and principles and pillars apply, whether we're in a pandemic or not. And districts who started to make this transition around equitable grading prior to the pandemic actually had an easier time, wasn't easy, but it was an easier time because they had already thought about a lot of these issues. And this, and the districts and schools that are tackling it now know that it's going to have this longer term impact when we come out of all this. And what we've found consistently across different contexts, whether it be urban, rural, suburban, large, small, independent, traditional public, even post-secondary and secondary, is that inquantitatively, there is reduced grade inflation and reduced grade deflation at the same time, which seems counterintuitive. But students are not getting all the points for just doing all the stuff. And they're not getting penalized for not doing all the stuff, even if they learn. And therefore, there is a reduction in achievement disparities. One of the other interesting things that we found is that there is a statistically significant increase in the correlation between the teacher-assigned grades and the standardized exam scores. And we are not unabashed lovers of standardized tests, but we feel like there's something positive happening when the teacher-assigned grades and the test scores become more closely aligned rather than farther away from each other. What we hear from students is that they're more motivated and more hopeful. They don't talk about their learning in terms of points as much. They talk about it in the areas of their growth. And their relationships with teachers get a whole lot stronger. And this was just one of the practices. We, there's about a dozen of them. So this is just one small part and some of the teachers reference them actually, zero to four and a few others. What teachers tell us is that this is really complex and difficult work because it is implicating a lot of their belief systems. And they are good people who always tried to do the right thing. And it is a hard thing to come to grips with when recognizing that some of those things actually may have been working at cross purposes to your very belief systems. But as they do this work, they end up being a lot more confident in the accuracy and fairness of their grades. And you heard the teachers talk about some specific ways. The arguments with students and caregivers go down and they spend less time on data entry. And they think about what they're, that they're trying to measure academic performance and not just tally the number of things a student did. So how do we do this in our district? Well, I'm going to first tell you what not to do, even though I think you want to do it. And that is that too many times what happens is that a board or a superintendent or a district administrator or a site leader will say, oh, my gosh, you're so right. Let's change this. Starting tomorrow, it's going to be different. And what happens is, as you might predict, is that teachers say, what the heck are you doing? Like, as Mark said at the beginning, like this is the island of autonomy, which we write about. Like, I am, there is nobody in a better position to accurately evaluate a student's performance than me and you're telling me how to do it? Uh-uh. And there's inconsistent implementation and confusion about what it means. And and so what we're really talking about is how do we build up this third leg for teachers? And what we've seen the most success is, is when teachers are given the opportunity and the space and the support to try and to learn about and then try the different practices and to get administrative tailwind to do that. So whether that means that there's carved out a professional development time or they're ready if caregivers have questions or et cetera. And what happens is, is as teachers start trying the practices, collecting evidence and then sharing it with colleagues and continuing to do that over time, you and then sharing it with colleagues, and continuing to do that over time, you build a body of evidence in the context around the benefits of the improved, more equitable practices that then inform policy. And so you end up sort of working in tandem, as you get enough evidence to support it from enough people in enough context, you can start to push and move to policy because it's based on the teacher's experiences and evidence. And there's lots of ways that districts pursue this, and there's no perfect way. And it's everything from, we'll create a little PLC here, to we'll have all the ninth grade teachers go through this, to starting at the middle school and working our way up, or starting at the high school and working the way down, getting student surveys, which you've already done, and there's a whole lot more information you can mine from them. I'll just close with this quote from Jaime, and I pulled this out because this was actually a teacher from, at a school where President Ford, I think, used to work for the school. So this is Jaime was a history teacher, and he said, "This has pushed me and all the teachers to be more equitable and transparent. Students at the same school should be able to have the same grading system, be able to understand that grading system, and know exactly how it supports learning." We have just scratched the surface, but I hope that this has been informative, and I hope you have many more questions than when you sat down to, to start this conversation a few hours ago. But again, I am just so grateful to have been given the opportunity to talk to you about this hugely important work, and hope that when and if you need additional supports, we can be somehow part of that effort. So thank you.
Thank you, Joe, and thank you, Marcus. In absentia, as he goes to his next commitment, and thank you again to, to the board for your attention to this important topic and your engagement on all these many levels. Just some final thoughts on behalf of the staff of the district. Really, when I think about what Mark was saying about, this is dismantling systems, this is shifting culture, that can feel very daunting, but I want to emphatically represent the commitment of the staff in the sentiment that we can achieve transformational change in this arena, as daunting as those things are. I'm going to make two points about that. The first one is, I think it's important to remember that this is a journey. So you'll see on the last slide there, that, that icon that sort of suggests a journey. And in a journey, in any journey, it's important to know where you've been and where you are. And I hope that tonight has given you a good sense of where we've been and where we are now. We, we learned a lot about the status of our district. I would be remiss not to acknowledge that we have actually undertaken some very important work to already begin to standards-based, to shift to standards-based and mastery and competency-based assessment with our elementary report cards effort, and in certain programs and school sites and departments in our secondary schools. But what we know is that those things are, as, as Joe and Mark pointed out, they are tweaks. I don't mean to minimize them because they're really substantive and important, but they're tweaks as long as the system remains in which they are operating. So if it's time for systemic change, then what we have to do is ask ourselves some important core questions about how consistent are our practices? What are our understandings about, about what our practices should be or shouldn't be? In fact, maybe more importantly, what understandings do we not yet have in common? What should be included in grades and what should not be included in grades? And how can we make sure that grades are things that communicate learning and not things we're not interested in knowing about, or worse yet, could be punitive to students, both in terms of their standing academically, but also personally when it comes to identity construction, as we heard earlier? Equally important is to understand that we are communicating to our families and students about the value of their learning experiences in school. And so these are all complex topics. Joe just did a really good job outlining different stages for change management with respect to grading. So the final point is to revisit the objectives that we had for today, and to, rather than looking at them enumerated, it's really to say, gosh, it's a journey, but a pitfall of using the journey analogy is, it can feel like you've got to buckle up and it's a long haul, and that may be true, but it's an urgent journey. And that's the final thought, it's an urgent journey with a moral imperative, because once we know better, we can do better. And that is the spirit of the objectives of the board study session on grading. Thank you again for your attention.
Oh, thank you so much. What an amazing presentation, and especially want to call out not only our guests, but our teachers who were so willing to share their thoughts and, and their experience. It's just amazing. I do think we have a couple of public comments. So Mr. Hio, would you let us know if we still have some folks who'd like to speak to this issue?
Thank you, President Ford. Yes, we have one speaker on this item, and Ms. Moni Dewitt.
Yes, Sandra and board, and thank you so much. It was a fascinating presentation, and I agree with much of what was brought forward, and I do think we need a shifting culture. I had the benefit of getting experience at Garden Street Academy, and they allowed students to resubmit their assignments with the belief that you learn most by getting to redo, and it also made it easier to show your mastery. And they also had narrative grading system in elementary so that students wouldn't view themselves as A, B, C, or D-type student, and it was more focused on intrinsic motivation. But that being said, I have observed in our district that I think the very disparity also comes around our culture around literacy, and we aren't using best practices. And so the groups that aren't financially well-off, or don't have parents of means who can afford the tutoring and other supports, fall through the cracks and do poorly. And if your literacy skills aren't high, then you start to fall behind after the third grade. And I think literacy is key. Our foster youth, our students with learning differences, and our English learners, virgin learners, they are struggling in this area, and we have a wait-to-fail policy, which is we don't usually step in until they hit the bottom 25%. So I would like to just have a conversation around our culture around literacy, as well as how this impacts it. The CAPS scores, that those very groups are falling urgently, desperately. And I do appreciate. As well as using more explicit ways that these students learn better. And Dr. Sally Shaywitz recommends those three things as best practices. Thank you again, I very much appreciate this discussion. Bye for now.
Thank you, President Ford. That concludes my comment.
Thank you so much. Now I'll open it up to board comments and questions, and I'll just go straight down the line. So Ms. Munoz, any questions or comments? No, sorry. I'll come back to you, Ms. Capes. Great. How about Ms. Alvarez, any questions or comments?
Well, I do have questions, more questions than answers at the beginning, which is good, which is a good thing, because it triggered a lot of thinking, a lot of analysis, and a lot of hope. And also, I do have a couple of comments. In thinking about the three pillars that Mr. Feldman mentioned, of course, the first one, the first pillar stands to me about an accurate reflection of a student's academic performance. And he was using the example of an essay, whether the mastery was there when writing an essay, and if it wasn't. And my question to us, when there isn't that mastery, what systems, and I know we have systems in place, don't take me wrong, but I believe that we need to have additional systems, that we have, need to have additional systems in place, like early assessments, for example, earlier assessments, where we can help students have that mastery of the subject matter. And then another thing that Dr. Schneider, I can listen to him forever, I love when he speaks about mathematics, and one thing that resonated with me is how I used to think that mathematics was the universal language, because that's how I learned, that's how I learned. I didn't have mastery of the English language when I came here, but I knew mathematics. And that was, to me, that was the universal language, but he brought up such a good point, especially now with the Common Core standards, where that mastery, that comprehension of language is so important to decipher that equation and be able to be successful. And when you lack that ability, it sets you so far behind. And that's something that I like for us, that district, to focus on. Moni Dewitt mentioned literacy, early literacy, and that's, that's something that also resonates that we put, that we focus on that, and assessing students and putting supports in place to help them get that literacy, that mastery, so that they can learn that subject matter. And of course, the other two pillars, I won't go into it because I know we don't have enough time, but one of the things is, okay, so what's next? And I really like what you said, Ms. Carey, is that now, this is the part of our journey, we know, now we know better, and that brings the responsibility. So I look forward to see our district and see what is next for us. So thank you for the amazing presentation, thank you to the teachers that spoke, thank you, Ms. Maldonado, for your leadership, and thank you, board members, for being in this journey together. Appreciate it.
Ms. Munoz?
Yes, yeah, thank you for, you know, gosh, so much to go over here, and I really appreciate everyone's participation. Mr. Feldman and, and his partner, you know, and all the material, so much food for thought. And just talking about how traditional grades have been contradictory in terms of our students and how they see themselves, I think is, is so important. More, you know, I think the more that can be done to support the teachers, because they're the ones that have to sit and, and do this, and so that the more support, the more training for the teachers to have an equitable, equitable system of grading. I appreciate, you know, President Ford sharing how, how it is, and I could just imagine, you know, the impact also of knowing that the grade that you give these students is something that they're going to know. I remember the grades that I had way back when, and it's been a while. I really like the participation of the teachers, and in terms of like Ms. Cruz at DP with the targets and the tasks, where you could see it clearly laid out, and the examples that are given, and including the parents, so that the parents know what to expect and how to support their students. Great, you know, great evening of learning.
Thank you. Ms. Capes, any comments? You're good. You're good. Great. I, I think I only want to support what you said, Ms. Carey, about this idea of it being a journey, and anything that's top-down, we know in education just doesn't work. And so it's going to be so important that this is a groundswell that's, that comes about because teachers find out, teachers look at data, teachers have an opportunity to speak with each other and to share in a non-threatening kind of way. And I love the fact that Joe and Mark offer solutions that are really reasonable and manageable. And I saw in my schools in LA that when they tried to use the zero-to-four grading scale instead of zero to 100, there were immediate changes. And where they eliminated zeros is, it's such a powerful change in the way grades evolve. And then I think there is another strategy of just obviously giving more weight to the most recent assignments and the growth, rather than the, all of the grades over time having the same kind of weight. So I think there are all kinds of things that are interesting and will be fun, and ultimately, not only are going to be great for kids, but they're going to be great for teachers, because I think back on all the hundreds of papers I tried to grade, that I probably didn't need to grade, I just needed to get an idea how these students were doing. And so I think it's ultimately going to be great for everyone. So with that, I guess I would just ask Superintendent Maldonado, do you have any comments before we conclude?
Well, the first thing I want to say is thank you to our teachers who stayed with us, thank you to the executive cabinet, who's been able to manage putting all of this together on top of reopening our schools, and everybody's hard work is truly appreciated. Thank you to Mr. Feldman and Mr. Boswell. I do want to say to respond a little bit, or just add to what you asked, Board Member Alvarez, and I'm going to ask Mr. Rouse to put up the learning landscape slide one more time. We are planning a summer, a summer of learning for not just our students, but also for our teachers and our leaders in our system. And as you can see from this slide, we're going to be looking at issues of instruction, curriculum, supports, and assessment, which were your questions, Ms. Alvarez. And so when we look at what supports will be put in place when kids aren't reaching those standards, we are looking at the MTSS implementation, which we reported to you this year when we talked about significant disproportionality in our district, when we see so many EMLs being referred to special ed. And we'll also be looking at publishing at the end of this year, the, what should my child know by the end of the grade level? So what should they know by the end of second grade, by the end of third grade? What should they know in ninth grade math? What should they know in 10th grade English and so forth? So those are some of the things that will be coming down with the work of so many, of teachers, so it's not just coming from the top down, but all of us together. I also want to reiterate this math language demands and early literacy language demands. As a former English learner, maybe a current and ongoing English learner forever, myself, I can say that it is so important that when we look at how students write, how they read, it matters. And looking at how we do designated ELD, integrated ELD, really look at our instructional program design for EMLs in elementary, will also matter. So we're going to begin some of that work, but none of it will be done with supports to teachers. And so I just want to make sure that I address some of the things you brought up, Ms. Alvarez, and give our audience and others, this learning landscape is going to continue to be happening in this journey. So thank you for your time.
Oh, thank you so much. That reminds me of the fact that one of my, one of my schools have some of the highest math scores in all of Los Angeles, and when we sat down with the principal and said, what did you and your staff do differently to get these great math scores? She said, I focused on reading.
That's right.
And it was, it was a powerful realization, so literacy does really make a difference. So just again, many thanks from the board to you for giving us this, this luxury of extended learning time, and also, I think you can tell, we're all very interested in continuing to learn about this and finding out about our progress as a district. So thanks.
I forgot my comment.
Sure.
And I'm sure it's in there somewhere.
Yes.
But the reclassification process for students, once a student is reclassified in ARFEP, that he, he or she goes to regular English class. I'd like to have a better understanding of the supports that are in place for that student. And I'm sure it's embedded in the MTSS, I'm sure it's already in there, but maybe in the future, in your future slides, maybe you can include a point of that, of what supports are included for ARFEP students, because they may be getting, let's say, a 4.0 GPA, but really, on the state assessment, they're a one. And the parent says, well, I thought he was doing really well, he has a 4.0, but he's not a great level. So I think if we can include that in our MTSS, that would be really helpful.
So, so.
Not only for me, but for the parents as well.
Absolutely, and let me add this part to your comment, I think this is where a point of agreement for us. Just because a student is reclassified as a fluent English speaker doesn't mean they reached the top of the mountain and nothing else needs to happen. At the same time, just because a student is an English-only speaker, doesn't mean they also mastered everything. So the, the point is, we're going to monitor all kids, and we're going to constantly be asking ourselves four questions. What do kids need to know? How do we know they learned it? What will we do when they don't learn it? What will we do when they do learn it? Because we also need to think about our gifted children, and what, how are we challenging them? So it's a both and answer to your question, but of course, you're speaking to issues that are near and dear to my heart, and we'll make sure we include that. Thank you.
Why does it go off automatically? Oh, someone's muting me. Okay. Anyway, I'll just say we're going on to the action agenda, and there is only one item tonight, and that is that the board must now consider approving the return to in-person learning in grade seven through 12, as soon as it is sanctioned and as safe by our county public health department. And so Ms. Maldonado, would you like to make any comments before we hear public comments on this issue? on this issue?
So I am recommending to the board that we get approval to open, as soon as we learn from our public health department, that we are, we have reached the red tier. I know that we had Susan Klein-Rothschild on earlier, who said we'll probably know by Tuesday, but I'm also hearing some back-channel information that it may be as soon as Friday, this Friday. So I just want to make sure that you have our commitment to inform you as soon as we hear, both the board, the public, our parents, our teachers, and everyone else, that as soon as we hear, we would like to be able to then announce, if it's this Friday, then we open next Monday, and we are ready to do so. And that's the approval we're seeking. If it's next Tuesday, then we open maybe next Wednesday. And so that's what we're asking from this board.
It makes perfect sense to me. So Ms. Trujillo, are there any public comments?
President Ford, there's no public comment on this item.
Did she say no? No. Okay, thank you so much. So board members, we kind of went through this before, but any other comments, questions before I call for a motion? Seeing none, I'd like to know if, now that we know the facts, the data, and the recommendations, I'd like to know if there is a motion to approve Santa Barbara Unified returning to in-person learning, grade seven through 12.
I recommend that motion. You know, you might think it's tedious, but with the additional words, for as many days as possible, I just want to, again, emphasize the, my support for as many days as possible of in-person.
In a week.
Mm-hmm. Which is not binding, gives you time to test your systems, but just
Repeat your motion again, please, so we know what's happening.
Yes, I move to approve the recommendation to open Santa Barbara Unified School District secondary education when the state allows, for as many days as is possible.
And is there a second? Ms. Alvarez is a second?
I second.
Thank you. So all in favor signify by raising your hand and saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Let's open up these secondary schools. The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
So we'll continue, just to conclude our meeting, first of all, look at coming events, folks. If you have had a chance just to review them, if, please let me know if there's any other coming events you'd like added to our agenda items, so that the public also knows what's coming up. Anything that board members would like to add under events? Hearing none, let's go on to future agenda items. Board members, look at the future agenda items, and are there any items that you would like to add at this time for consideration of inclusion in an upcoming board meeting? Hearing none, I'll go on to address that our next meeting is Tuesday, March 16th. It is a regular board meeting for March, will begin at 6:30 PM, and public participation will be by Zoom only. And so as we adjourned tonight, I think everyone is very grateful for how hard you have all worked to ensure that this board has the information and the best thinking that we need to learn and to take action. I continue to be really proud, not only of the work of the staff and the participation of our public, including our wonderful teachers, but also the curiosity, the engagement, and the thoughts of my sister board members. So with that, please continue to be safe, be positive, never lose hope, and we go forth. With that, this meeting of the Santa Barbara Unified School Board is adjourned. Good evening.